Okay then, all right. Good morning, everybody, and can I welcome you all to the annual Budget Setting Meeting? It seems a very long time since the last Budget Meeting, when coronavirus was just a distant threat. And since then, COVID-19 has changed our lives completely with the economy on the ropes. And we are now reaching the grim milestone of nearly 1,000 COVID deaths in Warwickshire. And I'm certain that when this pandemic is over, we will be able to remember those affected properly.
Can hear people talking now.
Now we go on to apologies. We'll start the meeting. We have apologies for absence. And I have one from Andy Wright. Do I have any other apologies?
I think Chris Williams may be late, Alan. He's had to go to hospital.
Yeah, I was aware of that, and I was going to just...
Sorry.
I think he said that he wanted just to not be apologised, but he would be a bit late. Okay, so we now go on to Members' Disclosure of Pecuniary and Non-Pecuniary Interests. Do we have any?
Chair?
Yeah.
Yes. One of the budgets today, Liberal Democrat, one mentions money to WALC. I am a member of WALC. I'm also a parish councillor. And can I ask, do I need to declare that as an interest?
I don't know. I will take advice on that. Could you just repeat it again?
Yes, yeah, I'm a member of WALC. And the Liberal Democrat budget talks about a grant to... Towards local bodies and WALC is specifically named. I'm also a parish councillor, as I say, as well. So do I need to declare that membership of Warwickshire area of local councils as an interest?
So just hang on a minute. I'm just taking advice here, because I don't know. We'll just note it, is the answer. You don't have to, but it will note it. Right.
Noting simply okay. Did I note that? And that covers me to take part in the meeting?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's fine, Adrian. Okay, we now go on to the minutes of the last meeting.
There's more hands up, Chairman, for interests.
Sorry, I didn't see that. I'll just go on to that. Okay. Sarah Bowden.
Thank you, Chair. I'm also a member of the Committee of the Warwick Association of Local Councils. So I'll note that as well, please. Thank you.
Okay, I have Dave Riley.
Thank you, Chair. By employment, I am also a member of WALC. Can you please note that?
Okay, Bill Gifford.
I'm a town council, Royal Leamington Spa Town Council, and Royal Leamington Spa Town Council is a member of WALC.
Okay, and I have Judy Falk. Judy.
Thank you. I'm a town councillor for Witnash, and Witnash are a part of the WALC organisation as well.
Okay, Joe Barker, Joe.
I'm a town councillor for Shipton Town Council, and they are a member of WALC.
Andy Jenks.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Chair of Kingsbury Parish Council, which is a member of WALC.
Okay, Dave Parsons next.
Thank you, Chair. I'm a member of Polesworth Parish Council, which is a member of WALC. Thank you.
Okay, Mark Cargill.
Thank you, Chair. I'm a member of Auster Town Council, which is a member of WALC.
Okay, and Anne Perry, Anne.
Morning, everybody. I'm a member of Moreton Mooral Parish Council, which is a member of WALC.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. We have nobody else asking to declare any interests. So I'll now go on to the minutes of the meeting that were held on the 50th of December last year. Are they... Do you agree that they're true and accurate record? Keith Condekar.
Thank you, Chair. Just on page five of the minutes, where it mentions a paragraph about me talking about Eton School. The bit that says, "In June 2019, Eton College missed out on wave funding", it was actually that it missed out. So if it could change that to "Neeeton missed out on wave funding", and then obviously the "it" in the next sentence needs then change to "Eton College", people happen to accept that.
Yeah, I think we're quite happy to set that. You did fortunately inform us of that earlier, Keith, and so we're happy to accept that. Otherwise, is it your wish I accept them as a true and accurate record? Okay, I'm sure that will. Anybody... Mark Cargill, you've got your hands up.
No, sorry, Chair.
Sorry, I saw it flash up. Okay, nobody is asking to... I've got councillor Bill Gifford who's like, no, he's gone again. Okay, right, we'll go on to announcements, Chairman's announcements. And the first one I have is to mention the death of a former county councillor, Motu Singh. It was a great sadness that I have to inform the council of the death of Motu on the 31st of January. And as well as being remembered as a dedicated representative of his community in South Leamington, Motu is notable as having become the first Indian member of Warwickshire County Council when he was elected in May 1985. From his earliest days in Leamington, Motu was involved with his community. And his early work involved raising funds for the purchase of the St Mary's Church Sunday School building. This was to become the first Sikh temple in the town. In 1967, he became Secretary of the Indian National Association. And between 1968 and 1978, he sat on the Race Equality Council. Over his time as a community representative in Leamington, Motu served as a governor of the Campion School, Witnash Nursery, Shrubland Street and Kingsway Schools. And he was a director of Regenesis, that's a regeneration scheme in South Leamington, and a trustee of the Sydney Centre and an executive director of Warwick Hospital. He was involved with a friendship scheme with the town of Beaux in Sierra Leone, and travelled there to witness the work being undertaken there to help the community. During his 24 years with the county council, Motu served on the Police Committee and its successor, the Police Authority. In 21 years on his body, he served twice as Chair. He also had a particular interest in social services and education. In 1999, Motu became the Vice-Chair of the Council, and 2000, he was the Chair. And as chairman, he met Prince Charles at Stratford-on-Avon, Her Majesty the Queen at Buckingham Palace Garden Party, and escorted Prince Philip at the Rules Show at Stoneley. He was elected on to the Leamington Town Council in 2003, and became Mayor of the town in the following year. Motu will always be remembered as a gentleman in the literal sense, and a fine politician and a community leader who set the bench for others to follow. I now, not unsurprisingly, have another member who'd like to say a few words. And I'll start off with Parminda Singh-Birdie. Parminda.
Thank you, Chair. You answered a lot about his achievements. Motu Singh was from an era where political practice was ideology-based. He was a hard socialist and dedicated his life to public service. As the first Sikh county councillor, he was pioneer and inspired many others up and down the country. As has been mentioned, he was elected to the county council and served the residents of Warwickshire for 24 years. He went on to become elected Chair of the council, Chairman of the Police Authority, and many other things, not withstanding Town Mayor of Royal Leamington Spa. A well-respected and well-known member of the local community in general, and Sikh community in particular, he will be sadly missed. My sincere condolences to members of staff of Warwickshire County Council, Royal Leamington Spa Town Council, family and friends of Motu Singh. Motu Singh, thank you for your service, and rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Parminda. I'm going to take the people in the order that are up on the screen. The next one to speak is councillor John Holland. John.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And you've been through the record of Motu's contribution, and 24 years as county councillor, serving his residents in Leamington Brunswick. It is absolutely remarkable record of achievement. But speaking as someone who knew Motu very well, I'd just like to say what a really warm and friendly and thoroughly nice person he was. He always was interested in people, always wanting to help people, and nothing was too much trouble. Just add a bit of personal information as well, because Motu worked for Royal Mail as postman. And he would start his daily work at 4:30 AM, do his full day's work with Royal Mail, and then come on to his public duties after that. It was quite an amazing amount of work and effort. And I do remember Motu telling me once that he had actually started at a university as an undergraduate, but ran out of money and wasn't able to complete his education. But he did reach his potential, because as such an excellent county councillor, I mean, nobody could have done better, nobody could have put in more work, and we will miss him. Thank you.
Thank you, John. The next one is councillor Sarah Bowden. Sarah. Sarah, are you there? We'll move on to...
You're on mute, Sarah. You're on mute.
Apologies, sorry. I'm using a headset, which I don't normally do. I do apologise. Too much technology today. Yeah, just saying, we're really sorry when we heard that Motu had died, even though I think it had been expected for a while. It was still a real shock. I've known Motu ever since I got elected to the county council in 1994. And of course, then knew him as a town councillor. He got elected to the town council on the first ever election in 2003, and only retired in 2019. And interestingly, he became Deputy Mayor when he was elected, very much on the basis that he... of his experience here as the county council. And having shared the county council, normally I think we had a four-year... Normally be elected for four years before you could be mayor. But Motu did it straight away because of his experience here, and did an excellent job. I've got a few abiding memories of Motu. One is what a really, really nice person he was, a very genuine person. And you really felt when he said he was pleased to see you, you knew that he actually meant it, was very, very genuine. When he was Chair of the county council, he came to Lillingston Youth Centre on open day. My daughter Claire was probably about, I think probably about 20 months, something like that. And we've got a lovely photograph of him holding her in his arms with his chain on, and they're gazing at him in adoration, really. And every time he saw my children, he would greet them like long-lost friends. And they really, really liked him, too. So Leamington's lost a really, really wonderful servant to the people of Leamington, and to the county of Warwickshire. And you do wonder if we'll ever see his light again, really. So he will be very, very sadly missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Next on the list is councillor Maggie O'Rourke. Maggie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is indeed very, very sad news. I knew Motu for a long time, particularly through the equality inclusion work that I've been involved with for about 30 years across Warwickshire. It's very sad. We all know that Motu worked really tirelessly on behalf of his local community when he served in public office as an elected mayor, and as an elected chair, and as an elected member. Motu was also the first Asian county councillor to be elected. We've all said he was a very kind and caring person, and you always felt that he got time for you. Often, you know, you have conversations with people, and you don't really feel that they're engaging with you. But Motu had that way with him, where he really did make you feel that he was listening to what you were saying, which is, I think, a really great thing in a politician. I would say his community and public service is truly inspirational, and, you know, is a real reminder of what it's really about to be an elected member, serving your community. He'd be there, not... I know he used to go off to work very early in the morning during his working life, but as soon as he got back, he'd be working right through the evening, 70s community. Anyway, I would just like to finish by saying... Sorry, I've got a bit of a sore throat. I'd like to finish with a quote from Mahatma Gandhi, who said, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others", which I feel is really fitting. Rest in peace, Motu.
Yeah, well said, Maggie. The next one, Izzy Second, Izzy.
Thank you, Chairman. So much has been said about Motu, and I'm not going to... Or try not to repeat what has been said. But I remember very well, not only my time on council with him, but actually my time on the Police Authority, where he had so much experience, and he was very well-regarded there as well. And I just... Everything everyone has said, I concur with. He was a kind man, he was a real gentleman, and he had a warmth to him. And he was always interested in people. And I think one thing that I would probably add is, he was a quiet man. And for being a quiet man, he filled the room with his personality. And I will miss him, too. I think he was a real gentleman.
Thank you. Thank you, Izzy. Next to speak is councillor Judy Falk. Judy.
Thank you, Chairman. Many of you know, I live just over the border in Brundrick Ward. So Motu was my county councillor for many, many years. I think he probably got fed up when I saw him down the shops, and down I went, and started raising all my concerns. But as everybody said, he was just such a gentleman. Many a time, I used to be with Bernard Curtin, and he'd come straight up and say, "Oh, it's my good friend Bernard", and Judy, how are you? And Stephen. He always knew your name, he knew your partner's name. He worked so hard for the area. I was also lucky to be on the campaigning governing body with him. And his quiet words of wisdom were always worth listening to. So we'll miss Motu. I got off to see him when he was well. And we will miss him around our area. And I know everybody who's worked with him and know him. We'll miss him. So rest in peace.
Thank you, Judy. Next to speak is Jonathan Chilvers. Jonathan.
Thank you very much, Chair. And as has been alluded, Motu represented Leamington Brunswick for 24 years. So one of my predecessors, and it's quite humbling when you think of the work that he put in 24 years to be one of his successors, and really something to live up to. And I think Motu managed to break boundaries and be a pioneer as the first Indian councillor in the county, and in other ways. But managed to do that whilst also being liked by almost everyone. And I think that's a really unusual combination. And his terms went on. He got more and more popular, it seemed. And he almost got 70% of the vote in the 1990s in Brunswick, which is obviously a huge amount. And he was just very happy, I'm told. Like, I'm just told that when you went around with Motu, people loved coming up to him and talking to him, very happy to approach him, and that he would just then listen really carefully, listen to a resident's concern. And if he felt that that cause was just, that he would be so tenacious and work so hard in pursuing it. And in recent years, I've... or sort of the last 10 years or so, I've got to know Motu personally, because he's a very close friend, or was a very close friend of my colleague, councillor Janet Ulti. And so I often used to see him, and he would greet me with that warm, gentle press of the hand, saying, "Hello, young man, how are you?", which was then often followed by a really helpful word of advice. So I often used to hear him and Janet planning their trips out to Hariana in northern India, where Motu founded a school with Janet as one of the founding trustees. Yet another example of his kind of lifelong service to people wherever they were in the world. And yeah, I just think that commitment and that service to people around him just ran through his entire being, and he will be very sadly missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next is councillor Helen Atkins. Helen.
Thank you, Chair. And I would just like to express my sadness, the death of Motu. He actually lived in my ward, so I would see him quite regularly. And I saw him at a general election campaign, I think it was the last time I saw him, and he was ailing. But he's still... His eyes still sparkled, and I think his eyes always sparkled with kindness and pleasure to see you. And he would, as Jonathan said, he would hold your hand and look into your eyes, and really ask you how you were, and give you some words of advice. And part of his legacy towards the end of his life was actually to pass the baton over to a couple of my colleagues, the first female Sikh candidate, sorry, councillors to be elected as town councillor and district councillor in his area. And I think that was a tribute to him, that they were elected and taking that forward for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Next is councillor Wallace Redford. Wallace.
Thank you, Chairman. I... Basically, in a previous life, when I was Chief Fire Officer, and he was a county councillor, but more on a personal note, when he was our local postman. And I have... He always, always had time to have a chat, come in for a cup of tea. And we used to meet in supermarkets, libraries, in Leamington High Street. And always, he had time to say hello, have a chat, ask how the family was, how you were getting on. He was such a kind and gentle person, a gentleman without peer. And we shall certainly miss him in the rural areas, and we send our condolences to his family. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Wallace. I have no more speakers. I was obviously on the county council for quite a few years with Motu, and I got to know him quite well. And also because we shared an interest in agriculture. Members of his family still farmed in the Punjab, where he repeatedly told me had some of the most fertile farmland in the world. And I remember him bringing a nephew to visit for a tour of our farm in Kennelworth, and having tea in the garden afterwards. He was really a true gentleman, and my thoughts also go out to his family. The next item I have to announce is the death of former county councillor Lady Jean Liggins. She was passed away in December, aged 92. Lady Liggins was a Conservative county councillor from 1985 to 1989. And in addition, she was Chair of the West Midlands Conservative Party, a governor of Maitland School, and served on the South Warwickshire Healthcare Trust, and the boards of Coventry Cathedral, the Belgrade Theatre and Mercia Sound. In 1990, she received a CBE for services to politics and the community. She was an avid cricket fan, and a supporter of Warwickshire County Council Cricket Club, and a much-loved member of the Coventry Operatic Society. And I'd now like to ask councillor Liz Cable to say a few words in her memory. Liz.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, when I first stood for the county council for the Barford area seat, Jean obviously lived in Barford, so she was my mentor, and showed me everything I needed to know, and introduced me to everybody I needed to know. And as you have said, Chairman, she was a nationally renowned Conservative worker, including being at the Grand Hotel in Brighton at the time of the bomb, but left early for a meeting in Leamington, which she put above the party, because she needed to be in Leamington with her husband. So she missed the aftermath of that. But she gave unstinting service. She did one term on the county, as you say. I have been told that it wasn't lively enough for her, which is why she didn't continue to stand. She was busy elsewhere, but she was an avid supporter of the county. Whenever I was with her, she latterly moved into Warwick. And I know she didn't speak to her local members. I used to get phone calls, "Can you sort out my parking permit?", and various other things for Warwick. But she was always, the minute you spoke to her, on about the party, what we were doing for the people. And I really have his support, and a very loyal member of her community. So rest in peace to Jean, and condolences to her family. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Liz. Next to speak is councillor John Holland. John.
Yes, thank you, Chair. There was actually some symmetry here, because when I moved into Warwick, Jean represented my area. And when she moved into Warwick, of course, she moved into Warwick West, and I represented her area. And I did get to know her quite well. And when I was new, I asked for a residence parking scheme. When she was new, she asked about how to get involved in life in the town centre of Warwick. And I suggested the Warwick Society. And in fact, that was the last time I met her, and it's very sad. But otherwise... Just one thing she was... We all keep memories of people. One thing she was absolutely adamant is that I would not use the title lady, and that she insisted that I call her Jean. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next is Izzy Second, Izzy.
Sorry, trouble with the buttons. Yes, thank you very much. Again, Jean was a power, a real power, a force of personality. She was deeply committed to working with her community, trying to improve things. She was gently and quietly persistent when she had, you know, a particular issue that she wanted to put forward to you. And she would quietly keep continuing to phone me up if there was something that she felt needed to happen, and was a real force for change. I wanted to say that she lived a terrific life to a terrific age, and it was only a short illness that brought her down at the end. And sad as it is to lose that, the commonality we have between these two people we're remembering today is their service to their community. And I think we should all recognise how valuable and important it is, and how much we should appreciate everyone who serves on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Izzy. Next is councillor Sarah Bowden. Sarah.
Thank you, Chair. I think I've managed to unmute myself now. Obviously, I wasn't on the county council with her, but I used to remember seeing her at meetings to do with health. I think she was very interested... I think she was very interested in health. And I think that's a very interesting comment from, from Izzy to say that lots of similarity between Motor and Lady Liggins, they may have come from different ends of the political spectrum, but their dedication to public service is very, 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 very similar. I'm intrigued by Les Kayborn's comment about things not being lively enough. If she was there between eighty-five and eighty-nine, that was probably the liveliest the county council ever was, because that was the first ever coalition. That was the years of singing with the piano, Josie Compton playing the piano till the early hours, setting budgets. So if that wasn't exciting enough, she clearly had very high expectations of, of public service. But I'm sure she will be very, very sadly missed and say somebody who dedicated her life to public service.
Thank you very much, Sarah. There are no other speakers. So before we move on, I'd just like to ask for a minute's silence in memory of these two councillors. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, in chairman's announcements, I would normally, as chairman of the county council, be telling you of the four or five engagements I have every week. Unfortunately, I've only had one. And that was a, the mayor of Leamington, Susan Rasmussen's virtual quiz night for charity. Where I entered a team and you'll be pleased to hear that out of the sixteen teams that qualified, our team won and we won a bottle of champagne. Unfortunately, due to COVID restrictions, I had to drink it all myself, but it was a very pleasant evening. And also on a personal note, I'd just like to say I did actually have my jab, my vaccination jab on, on the Saturday and was very impressed, very impressed on how the NHS are running that. And I also had a lateral flow test at Pound Lane in Lillington yesterday. And I was really impressed how that worked. I think the county council run it. They have, is it six places all over the county and they're doing on average eighteen thousand lateral flow tests a week. So it's going very well. And I think that's something which ought to be noted. Now we come to the main item on the agenda, item number two, the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two budget and the two thousand and twenty-one to twenty-six medium-term financial strategy. And before I call on councillor Peter Butler to move the Conservative group proposals, can I first say that the annual budget debate is complicated enough at the best of times. Doing it remotely requires even more patience from everyone involved. So the governance of the, governance of the meeting can be adhered to correctly. So can I ask you all for your forbearance today? And if we take things steadily, then I'm sure there will be plenty of time to hear all points of view. And with this in mind, can I also remind everyone that movers and seconders have to keep their speeches to ten minutes? Other councillors in the budget debate can only speak once and they have to, can't speak for more than five minutes. So thank you very much. Let the battle commence and I'd like to introduce or ask Peter Butler to move the first proposals. Peter.
Thank you, Chair. Before I launch into my speech, I feel kind of especially this year to, due to bound to offer my thanks to Andy Felton, Virginia Rene and their team and the finance sector and also Rob Powell. This has been a difficult year to set a budget and without their help and guidance and the late appearance of a lot of information, I would not be able to kind of say this budget today. So my thanks goes out to them sincerely. They've done a grand job in difficult situations and all from home, most of them. So into the speech, councillors, this time last year, we set a budget and an MTFS which put us in a position where we were financially secure, had good reserves and austerity was a word of the past. Now, that seems like a lifetime away and the world has changed, even to the extent that this is now an online meeting rather than in Shire Hall. And on top, on top of all that, it has happened to us over the last eleven months, three of our fellow councillors have passed away. Richard Chatterway, Bill Oner and Bob Stephens. All three were well-respected and liked in this chamber. They were wonderful servants to the people of Warwickshire and will be greatly missed by all. On the twenty-fifth of March last year, the crisis took hold and we went into lockdown. And most of us expecting that it would be over in less than four or five months. New words and phrases have appeared in our vocabularies over the last twelve months, such as furlough, teams, Zoom, and the most common phrase of all, you're on mute. At this point, I must thank and congratulate the management and the staff of Warwickshire County Council for stepping up to the challenge of protecting residents from the ravages of COVID crisis. Here are a few of the things that they have achieved over the last ten months. Transferring from office work into homeworking literally overnight. Quickly setting up the shielding programme, making the national news in the process. Support for care homes, well ahead of central government COVID initiatives and being praised nationally for our common sense approach and ease with which we reached agreements with, between social care, NHS partners and care providers. Sourcing PPE and making sure, by ensuring nobody ran out in Warwickshire. Food vouchers for vulnerable children during the school holidays. And providing laptops for disadvantaged children needing this equipment to access learning online during, learning, access learning online during lockdown. And above all, looking after our workforce to ensure wellbeing and support to that people could do their jobs. Amazingly, we have continued to deliver our services as normal with, with new innovations while keeping residents and staff safe. Again, thanks to you all. And I do want to recognise that all of you as members of this council have stood back and given officers the trust and the space to get on with things. I know this has not been easy and many like me itch to get back into normal, whatever that now looks like. The financial consequences to the county are considerable though, and the budget, considerable though. And the budget and the MTFS set last year have been significantly impacted and now need major refresh as the events of last year have overtaken us. Before COVID and the Warwickshire economy was strong and thriving, unemployment was low at less than two percent. Now unemployment is already around five percent and likely to increase to eight to ten percent once the furlough scheme stops. Hospitality and retail sectors have been badly affected and numerous businesses sadly already gone. There will be long-term economic and societal impacts as a result of the COVID virus and lockdowns. The government has helpfully pumped significant amounts of money into Warwickshire to support the economy and Warwickshire County Council in the form of the COVID emergency funds. This support was both vital and welcome. Both that despite the support of central government, our overall income has dropped. As a result of shrinking economy, the increase in our tax base has been reduced considerably. Before Christmas, corporate board put cabinet their assessment of the additional spending and savings needed in the new COVID reality. On the basis of numbers, we have crafted the conservative budget for twenty twenty-one and a new year, a new five-year MTFS, which we put before you today. The autumn settlement was for one year, not as we would want, but perhaps as expected in these uncertain times. But a three-year settlement would have made planning for the new budget and especially the MTFS so much easier. Despite the uncertainties, we have struck to our approach of being prudent and responsible with the council's finances and taxpayers' money. We have built our budget to achieve a balanced five-year position with sufficient reserves to further offset risk and retain flexibility for recovery through our investment funds. We will continue to monitor rigorously and to refresh the budget and the MTFS yearly as our position becomes clearer. The crisis has delayed some of the anticipated government legislation on subjects like devolution, fair funding review, business rates and the much anticipated green paper on social care. I hear that this will be out this week, so we'll, we'll just have to wait and see, although we have seen some precursors to this. As a result, extra funding for adult social care provision will be through a three percent precept on our council tax over two years. We have elected to take one percent in twenty-one, twenty-two and two percent in the following year. This will be on the top of the one point nine nine percent already to put a budget for in, in last year's MTFS. So for the year twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, we intend to increase the council tax by two point nine nine percent in total, which represents an increase of eighty-six pence per week on average band D property. As much as we Conservatives dislike having to raise council tax, this rise allows us to make, take out some of the less palatable savings offered to us in the corporate board proposals. Now, I want to move into principles which drive our budget proposals. One, flexibility is a word you will see used frequently in our recommendations. This is like no other budget I've ever been involved in. We have to be flexible to allow us to react to all that the COVID and post-COVID crisis will throw at us. So dedicated amounts of money given to specific projects is not going to be the way of this budget. Instead, we are putting money into our priority areas where we know COVID nineteen is going to affect Warwickshire's economy, communities, residents and services. So if there is one word to describe the budget, this budget, it is recovery. We are confident our approach will mean Warwickshire's communities and economy will be able to recover more quickly. Our approach will also reflect our ambition and desire to innovate and invest in sustainable change. We will look to do things differently, building on the pace, flexibility and creativity we are seeing from our council throughout the pandemic. Our focus on investment, for example, through Warwickshire Property Development Company and Warwickshire Recovery and Investment Fund, will aid the council to use our strong financial position to deliver our policy objectives more effectively. Together, these initiatives will invest in a better future of the county's economy, making our resources go further to enable us to support these, those individuals and communities most in need. With these principles in place, here are some of the major items we are funding in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Nine point one million into our children's social care services. Eight point two million to protect the elderly and vulnerable. Three point eight million to continue support for children with disabilities. One point five million in home-to-school transport. One point three million to offset the lower interest return on our investments. We will also provide one point five million to start a new Warwickshire Property Development Company in its first year. This is expected to deliver, at a conservative estimate, three point four million into the final two years of the MTFS, as well as stimulating the economy, create jobs, affordable housing and employment sites. We will create dedicated wellbeing fund. The priority here is mental health and helping our communities recover from the adverse effects of the pandemic and the lockdowns. And through the Place Shaping and Economic Growth Fund, we will create a social and community endowment fund to strengthen communities to help themselves for the economy and the quality of life. For our, our four revenue investment funds are to be streamlined into three areas, which sharpen the focus on COVID recovery and a sustainable future. One, it is the Preventing Vulnerability Fund. Next is the Climate Change Fund and finally the Place Shaping and Economic Growth Fund. Details on these funds are in the budget resolutions. Change and Transformation Fund. Our ability to react well to all that has happened in the last ten months is due to the Change Programme. Four years ago, we were brave in embracing transformation. This meant we were ready when the pandemic, pandemic hit. We will continue to be brave and innovative. We will continue to invest in our change fund to maximise efficiencies and the use of new technologies to deliver our services. Alongside this, rationalising our public estate is now both a priority and an opportunity due to the new agile working practices, homeworking accelerated by the COVID crisis. Adult social care. Adult social care is our highest spending area. We'll benefit from a three percent social care levy as well as a contribution from the council tax. There'll also be extra funding from the Better Care Fund. This will give some security for the next two to three years, hopefully to be followed by a long-expected green paper on social care to give a more sustainable future for this department. It is clear that the high needs block, increased demand, high needs block increased demand has been stripping the budget for many years. The Schools Forum has agreed to transfer naught point five percent of the DSG funding into the high needs block for twenty-one, twenty-two. And we thank them for their support in this challenging area. We have a programme to bring this budget into balance, which includes investment into new Warwickshire Academy and Exor and special needs pods located across the county. Funding sources and reserves. Last year, I stated the reserves are there for a rainy day or a crisis situation. Well, that day came on the twenty-fifth of March last year. Our financial resilience and strong reserves have allowed us to step up to the challenge of the last ten months. We will continue to maintain reserves to reflect the volatility of the times we are in. We are prudent and that will continue. We have released forty-three million pounds from reserve to smooth the way through the crisis for the five-year term of the MTFS. We will continue to assess the risks and release reserves if needed for recovery purposes. Our plan for budget reductions will generate seven point nine six nine million in the coming financial year and a thirty, forty, a further forty point three million over the period of the MTFS. Plans for the delivery of these savings are in appendix D of the Revenue Budget Resolution. We will fund one point four million pounds deficit on previous year's council tax collection and retain the provision for further losses over the next few years until the economy and house building recovers. We will use business rates funding of sixty-seven point six nine million to support the overall budget of the county council. And as already stated, we will increase council tax by two point nine nine percent. The MTFS, running from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six. The autumn settlement was for one year only. This makes it difficult to plan ahead and the level of income from local taxation will be both variable and unpredictable. Unemployment has a devastating effect on both our residents and the tax base of Warwickshire County Council. While we are looking to support residents and businesses as society and the economy recovers from the pandemic, technological developments, changing national and international economic relationships. The opportunities, the opportunities for commercial investment and long-term challenge of climate change also mean that now more than ever, our plans need to be flexible, able to adapt and change at pace whilst retaining a focus on our long-term goals and ambitions. In other words, we must be adaptable for whatever the future may throw at us to create policies and strategies that will deal with the challenges ahead and improve the lives and aspirations of Warwickshire residents. To drive our recovery and future sustainability, we are asking officers to come forward with business cases against the investments funds for the following priority areas. An economic support programme that focuses on delivering. One, Warwickshire Young Employment Promise, helping young adults gain new skills through training or retraining to help them better access work as an extension to the Kickstart Programme. A general retraining and upskilling fund, particularly targeting the digital, robotics and green sectors. And support and stimulus, a supportive stimulus to create new jobs, job opportunities for school leavers. An extended business support programme that builds on the COVID recovery initiatives already fast-tracked and agreed by our cabinet to support businesses. The focus being on support for business, startups, scale-ups, green business growth. Additionally, we will bring forward proposals for a Warwickshire Recovery and Investment Fund to invest up to a hundred and forty million pounds over five years to support businesses in our county. We will also establish the Warwickshire Property Development Company. We will also establish the Warwickshire Property Development Company. Mental health is a major issue in the wellbeing of our residents a result of the pandemic and lockdowns. Bereavements, loss of jobs and businesses, relationship breakdowns, increases in drug and alcohol addiction and debt. These pressures can result in mental breakdowns, anxiety, loss of confidence, depression and sometimes suicide. It affects young and older like. We are particularly concerned about the impact of lockdown on mental health and wellbeing and critically on our young people. We must help residents through this difficult episode in their lives. We have allocated one point three million to this area as well as bidding for the as a bidding for the NHS funding for Coventry and Warwickshire to support efforts to improve local mental health provision. If successful, this will deliver a further investment of approximately thirteen point five million into the Coventry and Warwickshire region. The details of these bids will be expanded upon by councillor Les Kayborn. We also intend to invest in our country parks with links to active travel and youth provision. There are commercial opportunities in our country parks for cafes, bike hire, outdoor education. We'd also like to explore the opportunities to stage music and theatre events. We intend to look at investment in the network of cycle routes between the county parks and major heritage and cultural sites. These initiatives will underpin a positive mental and physical health message and demonstrate a further commitment to our climate change objectives for the residents of Warwickshire. Continuing the safe school initiatives, looking to extend measures beyond those schools already judged as high risk. This will explore the delivery of further advisory twenty nine hour zones outside the schools and also build an active travel investment to support further education of children and parents in road safety issues and awareness. We will be asking for a Hayso Waste Recycling Centre strategic review. We want to establish a Warwickshire Children's Challenge Fund. This will help deliver major extracurricular activities, challenges for children in deprived areas, especially those children who have fallen behind with a disruption to their schooling. So in summary, councillors, I know you understand the challenges created by this dreadful pandemic. We all see the challenges. Economic recovery is key to getting people back on their feet and the county thriving again. New jobs and opportunities will appear, accelerated by the stimulus we are providing. And it is our duty to make sure our residents can take those opportunities. Morally, we must support the healing of those damaged mentally and physically by the pandemic. We need a strong economy, strong communities to keep individuals, to help individuals through recovery towards a better future. I hope you understand the need for us to be flexible, both financially and operationally, to meet these challenges. This budget ensures we will have a sharp focus on recovery, a high level of ambition and will be flexible and innovative in driving the county forward for a sustainable future. Politically, there will always be points on which we differ. We may disagree on detail. I know one thing we all agree on. The reason why we are councillors is to support our communities and pull together to give Warwickshire back its future. This year has shown us that together we are stronger and here today, together we can be stronger if we pull together for the people of Warwickshire. We look to your support for this budget. Many thanks.
Thank you very much, Peter. Is there a second to the Conservative group proposals?
Yes, I will second that and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you, councillor Second. I'd now like to invite the Labour Group leader, councillor Helen Atkins, to move her group's amendments.
Thank you, Chair. And can I extend my thanks as well to the finance team for all the support they gave me in the budget that we put forward today? So our Labour budget sets to tackle the fundamental problems facing the people of Warwickshire as we move forward through the second wave of the pandemic by rebuilding economic growth and tackling the inequalities highlighted by Covid nineteen. However, before commenting further on our budget proposals, I must note the Conservative government's complete incompetence in failing again to provide a long term sustainable plan for local government funding. We strongly oppose the expectation that to fund service need in twenty twenty one twenty two, the county council should raise council tax by five percent when families are struggling with additional financial hardship as a result of the economic effects of Covid nineteen. However, in order to offer a balanced budget, we have no alternative but to set plans to increase council tax and continue applying the adult social care precept. We are being forced into this decision. None of us should be under any illusions that this government has abdicated its responsibility for local government finances. Whilst claiming to cut income tax, this government is still promoting a programme of austerity by withdrawing government grants and instead forcing local government to increase upfront taxes every year. And still such council tax increases cannot make ends meet. Whilst our budget goes some way towards ameliorating the cuts proposed in the Conservative group's budget by significantly increasing the planned investment in supporting people and communities using funding released from reserves, even with such increase in council tax, we will still be forced into delivering seven point eight million pounds of budget reductions in twenty one twenty two, increasing to forty seven point seven million by twenty twenty six. All councils are facing similar financial difficulties across the country. This clear policy of transferring the burden of funding local services onto council taxpayers is unacceptable. This is why our budget proposals, we go some way to mitigate against the impact of such proposed council tax increases by the introduction of a council tax support fund worth two point five million pounds, which will extend support to those households who are facing difficulties in making such payments. Despite the financial restraints we face, we have some room for manoeuvre by using taxpayers' money which has been stored in reserves to see the creation of eight new funds, increasing the total allocated to the investment funds by a further six point five million over the next three years. Our investment funds include an education support fund to tackle, amongst other things, the attainment gap caused by Covid, as well as increased support for send services, investment in early years and the mental health of our children. Another five million pound fund will tackle inequalities across our communities and build upon the hard work of communities during the pandemic. We would also extend more support to people on universal credit as well as investment in youth services. And for the first time, we are creating a ring fenced investment fund for Black, Asian and minority ethnic groups to protect the wellbeing of such residents and to promote fairness. Our proposals also set to tackle health inequalities across Warwickshire through a health and wellbeing fund which would see a four million pound investment specifically focused upon the inequalities highlighted by the pandemic. We know that businesses across the county have been detrimentally affected by Covid, so we plan a Covid Business Recovery Fund, which would provide one point five million pounds to support businesses who have struggled during Covid and to those seeking investment in small businesses. Our Property Development Fund would set aside one point five million pounds to identify opportunities for the redevelopment of old properties to support the work of the Warwickshire Property and Development Company in the delivery of affordable and eco friendly housing objectives and to enhance partnership working with the district's boroughs in delivering social housing. Our budget also provides a focus on climate change by investing four million pounds in a number of initiatives, some focused on preserving the benefits of lockdown upon climate change, for example, the improvement of air qualities in our towns. We would also invest in offsetting the damage HS2 is causing across Warwickshire and we would set targets for the county council to be carbon neutral by twenty twenty five and Warwickshire as a county by twenty thirty. Overall, our budget goes a considerable way to meeting the needs of the people of Warwickshire by promoting economic growth and ensuring vulnerable people, including children, young people and people from minority ethnic communities are supported and can fulfil their potential. But may I end with a word of warning? We cannot go on like this, raising council tax but still making cuts to produce a balanced budget. We are standing on a precipice. Eventually, there will be no more room for either. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Helen. Do we have a second for your proposals?
Thank you, Chair. I will second the proposal and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you, councillor Parsons. Before I continue, can I just remind members to turn their cameras off when they're not speaking? Next, I'd like to invite the Liberal Democrat group leader councillor Gerry Rudehouse to move his group's amendments. Gerry.
Thank you, Mr Chairman from Snowy Rugby. In moving this this morning, I'd like to also echo my thanks certainly to Virginia, the finance team, for the work that they've done in helping us and helping each group bring forward the amendments that we see today. It's invaluable their support and this has been an interesting time, having to do it, of course, remotely by sending spreadsheets backwards and forwards by email. And at one point, Virginia and I crossed emails and managed to corrupt a file, which was quite an interesting situation. Can I also place on record our thanks to all the county council staff, NHS and social care staff and everybody else that's been supporting people through the pandemic through this time? I think we all recognise the fantastic work that's been going on and through communities as well. In bringing forward our proposals this year, Mr Chairman, we were fully realised where the administration is and where all the votes in the council chamber are. And by sometime this afternoon, I have no doubt, we will know where we're going in which particular budget adoption may go through. So the idea of what we bring forward is quite clearly putting forward priorities to the Conservative administration for them to hopefully take on board and also even like push them in that particular direction. Because though I'd love Labour and the Conservatives and the Greens to support our budget amendment, I suspect that that may not actually happen. And this is the way of the world with budget debates. And I think we would all agree that actually, that when the county council does pull together, it is great in what it does and how it delivers and works for families and for the people of Warwickshire. And certainly I give our group's commitment that following today and the outcome, that we will work with any political party for the better of Warwickshire residents going forward. Clearly, the main message from our budget amendment, which people have seen, is putting mental health support and young people and families first. And clearly, the children's commissioner in her recent report made it clear that there needs to be a rocket boost in funding for children's mental health services in her last report. And I think that is something that everybody in their budget amendments is talking about. But we've gone further and have actually put increased investment down that particular route. Mr Chairman, we're creating a generation Covid which is coming through and I think what we need to do is to be able to invest now. If you speak to people in the multi agency safeguarding hub, you will see that during September to November, there was a one thousand four hundred and sixty seven percent increase in use going through there. We know if you look at the graphs that are produced on children's and family services, that as lockdowns are eased, the numbers go upwards all the way. And that is actually something I think we all need to take account of, that the pressures that are being placed on families and children going forward through this pandemic is something that we need to invest in going forward. So I partly welcome where the Conservatives have talked about it, but talk is what it is. What we're saying is put money and put people first in that. The NSPCC also say, as each lockdown is eased, that they have seen their numbers increase. So we make sure that we want to bring that funding forward. At the same time, like the administration, we've looked at the investment pots and we've reduced, instead of down to three, we've gone down to two and we're focusing on climate change. Mr Chairman, this is a difficult budget debate to have via Microsoft Teams as we can all recognise and it's an interesting debate to be had going forward. But I think what we're trying to do in our amendment is actually put mental health and families first and actually push that message through to the administration for them to take on forward. We need to see the family support work is increased because their helpline and family supports saw a three hundred and eighteen percent increase. We know and all members recognise the pressures that are being put upon families at this point in time. Therefore, our proposals actually would bring forward that and actually help the investment. Mr Chairman, I so move.
Thank you, Gerry. Do we have a second for your proposals or amendments?
Yes, I would like to second the Liberal Democrat amendment and I reserve my right to speak.
Thank you, councillor Bowden. I'd now like to invite the leader of the Green Group, councillor Jonathan Chilvers, to move his group's amendments. Jonathan.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, and I'd once again like to thank Virginia and Andrew and her team, but also all the officers that responded often at quite short notice to our financial questions over recent times. So yeah, again, I want to recognise that we set this budget today in very difficult times. As councillor Coburn has already said, almost a thousand of our residents in Warwickshire have died of Covid nineteen in less than a year. And the impact on everybody, on jobs, businesses, mental health, debt, care homes and of course, the way we all work has been massive. And so in uncertain times, setting a budget is not easy. And I think that all the officers and the Conservative administration have done very well in doing this at this time. And our job has not been made easy by, once again, central government absolutely failing in their responsibility to provide a framework for local government to operate. Yet another one year funding settlement, no settlement on adult social care send, yet more eye watering cuts for people in Warwickshire. And the government have had the temerity to force our hand on council tax by slyly assuming that all authorities will put up the council tax by the maximum amount when they work out how much spending power we have. We've been left with little option or flexibility but to put up council tax by the maximum. This is central government forcing us to do the dirty work that they don't want to do. And we need to keep fighting publicly and privately for that to end. So I support us trying to get five years plan. I think we've tried to take responsible line, putting in a five year MTF and doing what the government is not. Though of course, we are only setting a one year budget today. So our budget proposals revolve around two main areas I'm going to talk about. The first is providing consistency and security in some of the peoples and communities elements of our budgets in uncertain times and how we can do that. And then the second area is how we can pick up the pace on climate and transport transformation. And then I'll talk a little bit about the property for our company. So consistency in our communities and peoples areas. I'll give you a couple of examples. We now have an excellent youth strategy to rebuild our work with young people and work with the voluntary sector in young people's organisations to help reduce young people's risk of exploitation and help each person reach their full potential. Yet we're still expecting after that youth strategy, they've only got two years of fixed funding. We're already well into the first year of that. We've put in a permanent allocation recognising that investing in young people won't happen quickly and we need that continuity and that consistency to allow officers and organisations to do their work with young people mentoring and reaching out to the people most in need. So although the funds that we have are fine, just one year and two year here, is not all's enough. We need that long term consistency and why we put in a permanent allocation. And we've done something similar with addictions, which has been absolutely slashed in recent years. But helping people recover from addictions keeps families together and reduces crime. But again, it takes time. Just putting one year in here, another year in here is not good enough. If our homeless services, our mental health services and our domestic abuse service is to work, our addictions service must too and it must have that consistency. On domestic abuse, I would say if there was one thing that I would just want to highlight from the savings from the cuts coming up, the Conservatives taking £100,000 out of a £500,000 domestic abuse investment seemed absolutely the wrong thing to do when we know that domestic abuse has been a rising issue over lockdown. And so I would really urge the administration to look again at that cut that they're proposing in year two of the MTFS. So a couple of examples there about how we can provide consistency to get long-term results. But we're also putting money in for counselling for workers who are care workers, particularly those in care homes. So many people have been working hard and long hours during the COVID pandemic, and some have seen very traumatic, difficult deaths and have been left, sometimes with little training, feeling helpless. And we must show that we support those who have been on the front line and putting appropriate counselling in place over the coming year will be important. So that's people and investment. So next, picking up the pace on climate and transport transformation. In the midst of this pandemic, we still face a climate emergency. The clock is still ticking. And I think Warwickshire has made some progress over the past year, but we must pick up the pace. And so we've put an extra £3 million in the climate fund, so we expect sort of to see cases come forward for that, for renewable energy within all of our corporate properties and the family of local authority schools, money towards tree planting, flooding, and also setting up a £2 million transport transformation fund. Because, again, some progress in this area, but we have so much to do if we are going to bring about the change to transport that we need in Warwickshire so we can have enjoyable and safe journeys to school, work and leisure. So we need to upgrade cycling and walking routes to the government's gear change standards. We want to see cases come forward on the Honeybourne rail line and Warwick University station, on neighbourhood zones for small areas where we can make it safer for people to walk around and get from A to B outside their own homes. There's so much to do and we can't keep asking officers to do more and more without the extra investment and paying for extra staff. And so we want to see strong cases come forward to capital investment and other funds in the coming year. Right, Warwickshire Property and Development Company. So we have proposed in our budget that we want to see a one-year delay to revise the business plan, to tip the needle in favour of more social value while still aiming to make a sustainable profit. And so we are still in support of a property company because I think it does help us retain control over what happens with some of the land in our county. But there's little point in us doing this if we're going to behave exactly like other mercenary property companies, not caring about the residents around them. And at the moment, it's not clear to me that that's what we're going to do. We need to show that we can put in long-term, low-carbon homes that are cheap to run, more affordable housing, make sure we have communities where people can get to the facilities they need easily on foot and by bike. So that is the reason that we have opted to delay that business plan, to revise that business plan. And if that means a delay, there's a huge, huge amount of money going into this and we need to get it right, and it is not right at the moment. So those proposals actually showing in the business plan for their property company showing £3 million profit by year five, you think, okay, well, that's a healthy amount. But yet there are still potentially large positive investments that can go into other areas and save money. So we've said that we'll set up two new hubs for the excellent housing project for care leavers, which is good for those care leavers, but also saves us money as a council, and also growing our suite of small, modern, caring care homes, which have the opportunity to look after some of our most vulnerable children, but also save the authority and the taxpayer considerable amounts of money. And so we want to see business cases brought forward on those sooner rather than later. I've already said that I think there are many good things about how the Conservatives have put together a budget in difficult times. I'd just like to say I appreciate some of the ideas from the Lib Dems on how we focus on investing in people as well as bricks and mortar. So I hope to see some of those go forward and some of the work that Labour have done on health inequalities and how we address the impact of increased council tax, I think are positive steps in theirs. So our budget is raised around how we can provide continuity and consistency in some of our people's budget in very uncertain times, as well as investing in improving things as well as saving money, and also how we continue to pick up the pace on climate change and transport transformation. And I commend these proposals to you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do we have a seconder?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Kandaka, I will second the proposals. And I think I'll talk now to actually give a bit more detail on some of them rather than talk later. A good example is health. One of the real key things we need to do is sort out some of the health problems we've got in Coventry and Warwickshire. And if you look at somewhere like Dunedin, we haven't yet got a good town centre, health centre. So obviously, we can't have one until it's planned out. So we put £100,000 in our budget to actually do the work so that part of the transforming Dunedin project can have that health centre. It's already in the plans, but no one is developing the work yet to actually make it happen. And with all the things that's going on with COVID, it's become abundantly clear places with a health centre in the centre could actually dish out the vaccines quicker and give better outcomes. We've also got issues with blood tests and all sorts of other health issues. And investing in health centres is really, really cheap. And we talk about the property company, the way the NHS works at the moment is if you have a health centre, it can actually earn income from the NHS by doing those blood tests, by doing those vaccinations. So we're really keen to push forward the things that actually help the public. We're going to borrow a vast amount of money to actually carry through this budget, lots of capital programmes, and we need to be doing things that actually help the public. A similar thing is transport. We're investing a vast amount of money on transport projects, but some of them are happening far too late and far too slow. One example which we want to put £8 million into straight away is the second entrance on the Dunedin railway station. We've already done the work to work out it costs around £8 million. We clearly have the need for it with all the extra housing going into the north of Dunedin. And hopefully, in two years' time, we're finally going to get the extra bay platform at Coventry railway station so we can have more trains running between Dunedin and Coventry via Bedworth. And not to have the station entrance at the same time seems mad. At a time of low interest rates and a massive need to stimulate the economy, and particularly the green transport economy, bringing forward the £8 million and building that station entrance now is a no-brainer. These things shouldn't be on the slow train, to use a pun. We should be sprinting ahead and getting these parts done. Likewise, we need to enable lots of things for the future. Yeah, this is effectively the last budget of this four-year term. So we want to actually enable a deeper look at flooding, looking at catching water higher in the catchment area. So each of our rivers has a wide area over which you can store water. And what we do traditionally is do flood measures right in the bottom of the valley. Obviously, it takes time to plan things out, so we're allocating funds to start the early work so that actually a future council can do the big projects to actually hold water further up in the catchment area. Yeah, on farmland, in woods, try and change how we do flood management so that it actually works better, uses less concrete and less disruption to the centre and actually perform better. A lot of those flash floods we get are down to large amounts of water running all the way down the catchment with no attenuation. We also like to do things like the tree planting far, far better. I mean, the boroughs are also talking about planting trees. We've put money in there to actually have a proper tree planting campaign, not like the HS2 campaign, where you plant vast sums of trees far too close together with little chance of survival. We actually need to plant the right native trees in the right situations so they lock in carbon. It really is important we do things well, not just tick off boxes. And talking of that, we've got things like the Bemidu Bridge project, an absolutely appalling project that's gone badly wrong. It's probably too far advanced now to fully cancel it, but we would actually reinvent that project to be a green transport project. We've cut the funding and actually, if you actually don't have the traffic there, we don't need to spend one and a half million pounds giving people compensation for the noise from this road. It's an absolutely bonkers project, the Bemidu Bridge. I'm sure our budget will get voted down. So we've also worked, and I've worked with the Liberal Democrats, to try and get the funding for a sustainable transport project along that corridor, actually sort out the issues with the lack of cycling lanes in the existing proposals. So hopefully, something will be coming forward on that, whether this budget passes or fails. But going forward, we need all our transport projects to be based upon doing the good stuff first, not just building a road and then seeing if we've got some money to tackle on a cycle lane. We need to make the sustainable transport corridors. And on the end of that, we've got the investment, property investment firm. I absolutely agree, we need to do it, but we need to do it so we add value. There is no point in borrowing £120 million to build exactly what Bellway or Taylor Wimpy might build. And I think this being the last budget for this administration, now is the time to say, slow down, accept we'll do this property investment company, but also accept we're going to have to do it very differently. We need it to be really sustainable. We need high-quality homes and the homes that we need. We're seeing actually a lot of population leave the country at the moment. I reckon there's probably about 30,000 have left Coventry and Warwickshire due to the pandemic and Brit exit of non-UK nationals. Yeah, we've not got the population problems we've got, but we've got an aging population. Yeah, we've got all sorts of other needs. So we need to build the right housing, the housing that Bellways and Taylor Wimpis aren't building. And that's why we're quite keen on delaying the race into the property company to actually get it right and build that social value so that when we've built these houses, they're actually serving not just the need to balance the books, but also the need to actually have housing for older people, housing that's cheap to heat, et cetera. So it's doing things better. It's not stopping all this stuff happening, it's doing it far better. And the final thing I wanted to mention is household roadside centres. We really acknowledge that some of the smaller centres will eventually close as being inviable. And there is such a use of stuff now. You see the popularity of the repair centre TV programme. We need to be investing in actually taking large items, the furniture and large things, and repairing them and reusing them. So we put money in our budget to actually spend on transforming our waste, get more reuse, recycling and repair. And I think I'll leave it there and I'll pick up more on the Treasury bit when we do the Treasury report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Keith. Well, I'm not aware of any other amendments, so now I'll open the meeting so that the Conservative group proposals and all amendments can be debated together.
Chair, I've got a kind of a put forward a motion for any amendment, please.
You are, yes, I will allow that. I don't think anybody can possibly object to that reasonable request. So yes, of course, Peter.
Since we set the budget, we've since seen a report and had conversations with Jonathan and concerns on the domestic abuse line. And so we've kind of, as a friendly amendment, we would like to reintroduce the £100,000 per year for the next two years on the domestic abuse, with the review after the second year as to whether we need to continue it. But as a friendly amendment, we would like to reintroduce those, a total of £200,000 over two years on the domestic abuse in recognition of the report that's come out prior to the weekend in terms of the increase in domestic abuse. I think they reported a 10% increase over the last 10 months. So with that evidence in mind and the conversations that Izzy has had with Jonathan, we'd like to offer that as a friendly amendment.
Could you indicate where the money is coming from? Because it is a budget.
It will come out of reserves.
Thank you very much. And do you have a seconder?
I'm happy to second that.
Okay, councillor second. Well, okay, everyone's happy with that. So now I'll open the debate where the Conservative group proposal, sorry. Okay, can I assume that everybody will accept this amendment? Do I have anybody who wants to vote against or abstain on that? No? Okay, in that case, Peter, your amendment is accepted. And now we'd like to open the debate where the Conservative group proposals and all amendments will be debated together. And we'll start off with Geoff Morgan, councillor Geoff Morgan. Geoff?
Thank you very much. No, I think I'm fine. Thank you very much, Chairman. I'd just like to say a few words about the Conservative budget from the perspective of the children and families portfolio. Over the last 12 months, demand has risen, as you might imagine, services. This is as a direct result of the lockdowns, as more children and families have been identified as needing support and safeguarding. For example, over the past three months, the last three months of 2020, domestic abuse, which we were just talking about, referrals rose by 20%. Overall, demand for assessments rose by 60%. We've got the highest number now of children in care in Warwickshire, highest monthly figure across a year, 841. This is due both to a delay in assessments caused by the pandemic and difficulties obtaining hearings within the family court. However, at the end of 2020, we had also seen more children entering care too due to issues of neglect, family breakdown and abuse. Fortunately, this is starting to change. We saw a drop in the number of children in care and we hope very, very much that that situation will continue. Sadly, however, we've seen a rise in mental health, domestic abuse, neglect and other family issues, and I'll come back to that later. Throughout the pandemic, workers focused on staying in contact with children, in particular, the higher needs of children. We are adding an additional £9 million into children's care. I'm very, very proud to be able to say this, and it will make a huge difference. This is the sort of turbo charge to funding that people have been asking for. Of this, the largest investment is £5.8 million, and that will go to placements for our looked-after children. Costs have escalated, even with increased use of framework contracts. And young people with high needs are increasingly expensive to support. There is a shortage of quality placements, and given the increasing demand, that's driving up costs. It's the iron law of economics, I'm afraid. Additionally, we are investing £3.8 million into the education budget for children in care with disabilities to ensure that they and their families can access appropriate support within their communities through an extension of the direct payment scheme. There will be an extra £0.4 million to double the capacity of the out-of-house social care team, and my colleague councillor Pam Williams will talk about that later. This additional investment on top of the base rollover of the £60 million will enable us to offer targeted youth work activities to our most vulnerable through a new £900,000 fund and additional youth work staff. We will be able to invest more in young people leaving care and into supported accommodation through projects such as the house project. supported accommodation through projects such as the house project. There will be £1 million in this area as a whole. We can increase the number of foster carers, increase SGOs and more, which my colleagues may pick up on later. Cabinet have also agreed a change in policy that Warwickshire will now have its own Ofsted registered children's home, which will help increase placement choice. We remain committed to children being in foster care, but recognise that some are unable to live in a normal family environment. Our increased budget for next year will allow us to extend this scheme if we can find suitable premises. Mental health has been mentioned, and there's no doubt that these issues have become more prominent over this past year. Sadly, we've seen several young people take their own lives, which is tragic. We're proposing to invest more in this area, particularly targeting children and young people in distress who are not known to us, and offering an early help invitation. Investment from our Preventing Vulnerability Investment Fund will provide commissioners to look at developments other than Core Cam's commission and ensure that there is joint work between mental health and substance abuse. It is our intention to bring this project forward at the earliest opportunity. In short, colleagues, in the teeth of a very different national situation, Warwickshire is still investing in children. Conservatives do care about the less fortunate in Warwickshire. My colleague councillor Butlin has outlined an exciting positive budget. We're going to do great things. On the basis of this, I commend the Conservative Budget to council. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Morgan. I have no other speakers indicating it's going to be a very short meeting unless somebody else would like to, oh, yes, councillor Pam Williams. Pam?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Chair. I would just like to support Geoff's talk on children's, children and families. There's never been a more important time to support children and families. Children and families have been at the heart of this pandemic in trying to get their children through, the families through, older people through. It's been a really, really devastating situation for everybody. And in Warwickshire, we have now set up a new emergency duty team, and this team is going to be able to support everybody who has difficulties. The Family Information Service is a service that was set up quite a while ago, and it's there to help. We're here to help. We want to hear when people have difficulties. And this is an investment, I think, that we really need to see go forward for our families and for everybody in Warwickshire that needs help and advice at this very difficult time. The number of children in care rising to over 800 is of great concern, and I'm really pleased to report that the special guardianship order is now getting support from everybody in the children and families team. The special guardianship orders means that children can stay within their families. And although we're now getting more foster carers apply, and more people applying to be foster carers, we still need to keep children and families where we can. And this is an important area of work that needs to be further developed. And I'm pleased that we'll be invested in this, in this area of work for children in Warwickshire. So I commend this budget, this Conservative budget. It supports the most vulnerable in our society. It supports our children and families. It supports businesses going forward. It supports the economy, and it supports future investment in Warwickshire and the people of Warwickshire. And it's a strong and confident budget, and this is what we need to go forward. We need the people of Warwickshire to feel strong and confident to get us out of this. But most of all, this Conservative budget is a recovery budget, and this is where we need to go. We need to be strong and confident for the future and invest in every, every part of our economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next to speak is councillor John Holland. John?
Well, Chair, I agree with your opening comments at the start of the meeting that this terrible tragedy that we have already experienced, nearly 1,000 deaths in Warwickshire, none of us have ever experienced anything of that kind. And clearly, it's going to need very, very strong action to recover from this medical disaster, but also the economic disaster which is following. We have heard in our previous council meeting in December about the situation of people whose jobs had disappeared, and the new jobs that come back are not going to be the same as the old jobs. So clearly, there's a retraining need. The economic disaster we have experienced before in the 1980s, and we saw then a much stronger, very much stronger response from the county council in buying up land to develop for new businesses and coordinating training in colleges and elsewhere so that we have the skilled workforce for the new businesses. It took a long time, decades, but the response from the county council now doesn't even start on that route. And of course, we are starting from a weaker position. You will recall the enormous amount of work that went on in Health and Wellbeing Board in making cuts to the NHS, £267 million a year from Coventry and Warwickshire. Actually, total cuts were pushed for £400 million per year to include the social services. And obviously, we managed to resist a lot of that, but services like health visitors, which is a county council service massively reduced, and school nurses. These are essential services for children in deprived families. It's funny that in the past, when Tony Blair was Prime Minister, a lot of work went on, on school meals and having school meals of the correct nutritional value. And I will remember councillor Second as the schools' portfolio holder sending us a video into school governors about the importance of looking in lunchboxes and getting school meals of the correct nutritional value, whereas in the October half term, sending children to food banks seemed to be acceptable. The scale of the difference in the tragedy of the Covid virus, and of course, it's the most vulnerable people that always suffer the most. Now, the point that councillor Atkins made is that the government have put the council in an impossible position, that we're ending up with both cuts and increased council tax. People are not in a position to pay the increased council tax, and it's the most vulnerable people who need our services. It wasn't what David Cameron and George Osborne promised in 2010. They promised to increase public spending and reduce taxes, and the reverse has happened. I'm advised that between 2010 and 2020, the county council has been cut by 43%, and we have had significant increases above inflation in council tax. I think councillor Atkins was absolutely correct. We cannot go on like this. And the ability of our local Conservatives to deal with this is fairly limited. I accept that, that you need to put pressure on your government. There are a few things, though, that we could do. I well remember 2014, when council voted to move to a unitary council, and we were told it would save £17 million a year. So in the years since then, well over £100 million has been unnecessarily spent that could have gone into services. And in the autumn, we had a statement that if we put in a submission to the Secretary of State by the end of September, we would have approval for a unitary council in December. I would be interested, councillor Second, when you speak at the end of this debate, if you could give us a progress report on that and exactly what the position is. Also, we called that the document which was submitted did make quite a large number of promises, one of the promises being to level up education. And that presumably was levelling up. And I haven't seen anywhere in the Conservative budget increasing the funding of schools up to the level of the private schools, which is the promise that was made. So I have to say, whatever we vote today, we're not going to solve the problem. We do need a much stronger recovery plan, and it will become obvious in future months and years how much stronger that recovery plan is going to need to be. And it will take decades to recover. The county council is in a unique position to provide that leadership. I don't see it in the Conservative budget. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, John. And next to speak is councillor Clive Rickards. Clive?
Thank you, Chair. I think the Liberal Democrat budget is essentially a sensible one, where we're not talking in tongues of fire, but very much in the language of priorities. And we all know this is a period in which priorities count perhaps more than ever. But I just want to draw attention to an aspect of our proposals concerning the financing of new cycling routes, rights of way and forestry. And I think the case for new cycling routes is well rehearsed, and, you know, I think a lot more progress could be made by council on that. Also with forestry, I think we've got an excellent forestry team, and already they do a lot of very valuable work and maintenance, in particular avoiding, you know, repollarding to avoid the dangers of branch falls, et cetera. But in particular, I want to highlight the proposal on improving rights of way. There's a growing problem in this county in relation to rights of way. In particular, you know, I want to look at the work of the Countryside Paths team. There are not very many of them, and increasingly they're facing pressures from residents because of the pressure group activity of those who wish to promote vehicular activity along these countryside paths. Many of them now become U roads, U routes, unclassified routes. And I think, you know, we need to put more finance in to, for the maintenance of those routes, particularly where damage has occurred. But also, it's really a plea to make larger that section, the countryside path section, because, you know, they're going to increasingly face all sorts of legal problems that need all sorts of preparation, that, you know, where appeals might go to planning inspectors and on to public inquiries and so on. So, you know, it's really a plea for the future that we need, I think, to invest more in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Clive. Next is councillor Les Cabor. Les?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to first thank all our staff for the work they've done on Covid. This is a Covid recovery budget, and we really do think, need to thank all our staff, particularly in public health, and then all the support they've had from all the other parts of the council to do the Covid. And as you said earlier, Chairman, I had my jab. The systems are really working, working well, and as you say, are testing as well. And in recognising the work of our staff, members may recall that in the budget two years ago, we, I initiated, supported by councillor Second, that we go for the Thrive at Work Award for the mental health of our staff. And I'm delighted to say we have achieved 80% of the work all completed now to go to bronze accreditation. And after the staff survey that will start shortly, the action plan to complete that will be done, and we will hope to get our bronze Thrive at Work Mental Health Award by April. And this is on top of all the day work caused and additional work caused by Covid. So we really do need to thank our staff for the effort they've put in within themselves, and the team supported them on mental health through our staff, which has been one of our critical recovery aims. And we also have 17 listening mates within our staff, fully trained on mental health awareness, suicide prevention, bullying, harassment and active learning skills. So, I mean, our staff, as well as doing everything else to keep us Covid safe and everything else, are doing. And on top of that, the final brilliant news is we have 450 of our staff already completed a three-day wellbeing and resilience programme to improve their mental health and the stresses caused by Covid, which is absolutely been, and the critical part of this, having achieved this ourselves, then as we move forward to assist our businesses with recovery, we can encourage them to do the same mental health work with their staff as well and lead by example. But I do want to concentrate, Chairman, on mental, mental health and what is happening in the mental, mental health field, and how we have used our budget to support mental, mental health. Members that attended the members' presentation a couple of three weeks ago on community mental health will know we're a very active, active part of the 12 and a half million combined Coventry and Warwickshire bid to the government for mental health. The work that was outlined in that presentation has now been submitted to government as our plan, and we will get that, some of money to start that work over three years. Also, we've had confirmation that we will get £189,000 for suicide prevention and bereavement services. And to that end, we've already put a real-time surveillance post into the coroner's office so that we can support families where suicides are prevention. And also, we will receive 840 government money through NHS over three years for alternatives to crisis admission, working in the community, keeping people safe where they are and have them. And this, you know, I listened to John Holland, who got his figures wrong as usual. This is government money through the NHS coming into Warwickshire and Coventry to support mental health. And we ourselves in our November, December cabinet, put a further 1.3 million in to, over two years, to support mental health resilience amongst the voluntary and community sector, bids for funding, support grassroots, capital funding if needed to help people, and mental health work in schools and with our young people, which my colleague Geoff Morgan alluded to. So we are serious, both nationally and locally, to really do the best for the mental health of our, of our, our area. And I then want to move on to 1.13 in councillor Butlin's address, where we have agreed, and I thank my cabinet colleagues for agreeing to this, for a dedicated community wellbeing fund to sit within our Preventing Vulnerability Investment Fund. And this will bring forward schemes which officers feel are vital to help our wellbeing, which works. And the first one is living well with dementia. Our strategy will do for a relaunch this spring. And as part of that, we will have a fund to support that, that new strategy, which will give support for reinstatement of key provision like our dementia cafes and memory cafes, and to extend the range of those across the county, strengthening communications, and looking at how we can use assistive technologies within these groups to support people to have, to live even better with dementia. Because it is a great problem and a rising problem. And we really, as a council, are really keen to relaunch our strategy and really make it even more effective than, than the other one. Young people's mental, mental health outside of CAMHS, councillor Morgan has referred to. And we are working on our self-harm reduction strategy, and we will put extra funding in to, when, when we have that strategy finalised, to have, to have serious support that we can, we can give to the young people that are self-harming, and, and to provide, to aid their recovery, and certainly, and to reduce the actual incidence. the actual incidence of self-harm that we are, and that is particularly, particularly important to our young people within, within Covid. And as, as we will support our dementia strategy, we will put additional resource within that fund to our, our all-age autism strategy. And this again is to help the individuals who suffer from this terrible times and their families to get the right support, advice and guidance. You know, so this is all added up, you know, it's some 15, 16 million additional funding coming in to help us do our very best for the men, mental health. And I see the Liberals have put it in their budgets, so I'm sure they will be supporting us in that, in, in that, in that aim. Just to move briefly on to social, social care. As, as councillor said, we've put 8.2 million into social care, but it is difficult, difficult for us. So we will take 1% of, of the levy this year. And that means we can cope with any emerging pressures on social care. Social care is changing. We, we've done some of the best work in the country on discharge from hospital, support from the fire and rescue on, on getting people from hospital. But we need to be aware that we are in a change, changing market. People coming out of hospital with long, long Covid, needing, needing our, our assistance, some resistance at the moment with people not wanting to, to put their loved ones in care homes. And we totally understand that. So we need to review what we are doing and ensure that what we are doing in social care fully, fully meets the demands of, of our people we represent. And taking the 1% and the work, the other funding we have put in will enable us to do this as well. And, and public health, our government grant has gone up slightly this year. But again, Warwickshire, to do its best for the people of Warwickshire, is, is put core funding of our own, nearly three and a half million, if you look in the papers, in, into public health as well. We are, and I am proud of our departments and, and this, and this cabinet and our party. We are doing the, really the very best for the people of Warwickshire in these difficult times, in, in these areas. And I fully commend the budget and the work we are doing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Les. I did have councillor Anne Parry next to speak, but she's put her hand down. Do you still wish to speak, Anne?
Oh, yes, please, Chair.
Right, applause yours.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, on behalf of all my residents, I would actually like to pay tribute to all our health teams across, over the last 12 months throughout this awful pandemic and with the rollout of the vaccines. The hard work has been monumental and is greatly appreciated. So thank you all. Now HS2 is having a dramatic impact on Warwickshire in terms of ravaging our countryside and causing immense distress to many of our residents. And in particular, Stratford-on-Avon district has been hit extremely hard. The nine-month road closure of the main arterial road from the Foss Way into Southham is causing immeasurable costs to local businesses and residents. And as the main route to the major vaccine centre at Southham Clinic has added to the stress of patients from the surrounding villages within a radius of 10 miles. It's therefore extraordinary that the Liberal Democrat proposals include a 62% reduction. Yes, 62% reduction in the budget allocation to help mitigate the impacts of HS2 on Warwickshire residents and communities. It is even more surprising to note that this budget reduction of £83,000 is supported by those Lib Dem councillors in both Stratford and Warwick districts, particularly when the party is currently represented by district councillors for both the Napton and Fennec Compton and Longitchington and Stockton Wards, whose residents are both horrifically affected by HS2. I know that both the two Lib Dem councillors for SDC in those areas feel extremely strongly about the destruction works currently being carried out by HS2 across their words. But clearly, neither have been consulted on this 62% budget slashing proposal. And I'm just astonished that all the Lib Dem councillors from Stratford and Warwick districts have signed up to this proposal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Anne. Next on the list is councillor Caroline Phillips. Caroline.
Yeah, hello. Thank you, Chair. I wish I could join in all this self-congratulatory stuff, but I'm, I'm sorry, I just can't. When we look back at what, at what's been happening, the first round of cuts that we suffered in, in Leamington were to youth services. All the youth services were shut down. We've lost children's centres. We've lost family support workers. We've, we've been putting the social care increase on year on year, which means the, the people from low-income families are paying less and less. We've, we, we're driving people into poverty with waking them wait for five weeks for, for universal credit for people who have lost their jobs. Or alternatively, alternatively, we can drive them into debt by giving them a loan. We have a send, a national send crisis, where parents have been driven almost to breakdowns. Some of them have been driven to breakdowns. And then we wonder why we've got an increase in domestic violence and mental health problems. Well, anybody could have seen this, this coming, this, excuse me, this crisis coming. Regardless of, of Covid, we've been building up for, since 2010, we've been building up these problems and they're, they're now coming home to roost. So saying, oh, we, we're going to put money into this and that. Yeah, I'm glad you're doing it, but we shouldn't have cut them in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Caroline. Next to speak is councillor Judy Tholp. Judy.
Thank you. I just want to, I just want to thank councillor Gilbertson and Kandaka for bringing forward the funding cuts in the domestic service and asking they be reinstated. I've sat on or I've been part of six domestic homicide reviews in two years. That's ended up with somebody's life being, being lost. Constantly at meetings the last 12 months with the police and with health, we've been told that domestic abuse is, is increasing. I think all of us at some time or other would have had casework where domestic violence has been part of, of that. I'm really pleased it's been raised. I was going to raise it if it wasn't. I'm really pleased that the Conservatives agreed to put the money back in. We've got new legislation coming through, thankfully, on, on domestic violence. And we're going to have to address that. So, um, yes, it was a cut. No, it's not. I'm really pleased and thank you for putting it back in.
Oh, thank you, Judy. And next to speak is councillor Jill Simpson-Vince. Jill.
Thank you, Chair. I'll make sure all the buttons are sorted out before I speak. Oh gosh, what a 12 months. You know, 12 months ago, we were all sat in the chamber arguing and debating the budgets, not knowing that 12 months on, we would all be sat here. I, like several other people on this call, are doing this with homeschooling. You know, that's just the way our lives are now. It's, you know, everybody's had to change. Everything has had to adapt, including councils, including businesses. And everybody's been kind of having to muddle through and having, you know, coming up with budgets. When we've had increased guidance coming through and financial settlements coming through and things changing and we, you know, for most of us in our daily lives, we don't know what's going to go from one minute to the next. We're in lockdown at the moment, you know, who knows what it's going to look like in two months' time. You know, we just, you just have to work with what you've got. And fortunately for us, we've had a Conservative administration that has been prudent on its budgets for the last few years and making sure that we balance everything and that we have reserves, because we're in a position today with this budget that we, we've got access to a reserves pot that a lot of councils across the country probably don't have right now. And this is the rainy day fund, you know, if this, if this doesn't classify it as rainy day, which is what you have reserves for, then I don't know what, what does, you know. Recession, recessions in the past, things that we've had in the past, you know. This is on a different scale. This really is. And the officers have had a huge job in trying to pull everything together and have a look at everything and try and come out. I think it's, it's fantastic. And it's not being self-congratulatory, as councillor Phillips said. This is an incredible achievement by officers to get us to this point that we've got a budget that we can put through today. You know, let's, you know, is it, is it perfect? There's no thing, such thing as a perfect budget. But we've got a really good budget that we can move forward for, that we can build on and that doesn't put us in financial trouble going forward. So I absolutely support this budget today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Jill. Next to speak is councillor Maggie O'Rourke. Maggie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And yes, I'd like to start by saying thank you to all the fantastic workers in the health service and social care in local government. Our officers have done a fantastic job and so have the staff. They've stood up to the mark when they've been called on in a time of national crisis. And we've all come to realise how important these people are to ensuring that we have the right responses in our communities. And, and we've seen that throughout the pandemic. Domestic violence is a terrible thing and lots of people have mentioned it today. But there is no doubt, and we already know from national sort of surveys and information, that additional financial pressures on local families will not make that any better. In fact, it will make it worse. I think we all know it is a particularly difficult time for households right across Warwickshire, with many of them now struggling to keep up with their bills, loan payments, mortgages and rents. And mainly, most of this is mainly due to Covid. We all know as well that people who've lost their job, we all know people that have lost their jobs. I mean, I know a couple of people, I've got two people in my family that have lost their jobs since Covid started. I know lots of people that are living on 80% of their normal salary. The, the, the reality is that many Warwickshire families are already struggling. And once the relief scheme finishes, they'll be more suffering. And I feel absolutely sick at the thought that this government is piling on the financial pressure onto our Warwickshire residents. It just doesn't feel right. I'm personally really disheartened that this government failed to bully from Covid activities across the public sector. We stood up, we all stood up, all of us in council, we've all had to work really hard. We stood up, but the government hasn't stood up to support us in terms of what we do. I just feel that central government are not supporting Warwickshire residents in their hour of need. And local councils are basically being starved out of existence. This is a particularly annoying when the officers and staff, as I've already said, have worked so very hard. I really struggle with this whole issue at the moment in terms of the finances. Thank you. Let me have my say.
Thank you, Maggie. Next to speak is councillor Nicola Davis. Nicola.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to welcome the Conservatives' agreement to remove cuts to the Domestic Abuse Service from their budget proposal. Protecting and supporting those who've been placed in the most vulnerable positions during the pandemic and the lockdown is vitally important, I think, to all of us. And it's the reason why in our Lib Dem budget amendment, we're proposing an investment of £4 million over the medium term to support families and young people. I'd also like to very briefly highlight the additional funding we're proposing for new cycling routes and forestry. A healthy stock of street, street trees is vitally important to maximising all of our efforts to improve air quality. And visually within Leamington, street trees are part of the green and leafy character of the town, which many residents and visitors enjoy and appreciate in, in their daily life. So thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Nicola. Next to speak is councillor Adrian Warwick. So Adrian.
Thank you so much, Chairman. And I would like to add my thanks as well to all those who've helped with this pandemic. Been a lot said this morning and I'm sort of debating where to start. Labour is talking about a 5% increase in council tax. And I'm just adding 1.99 and one and getting 2.99. So I don't know which, probably a former minister's been advising them on maths. That's all I can perhaps suggest is, is the case with this or something, because I, I can't get it to that. But the government and the support from the government. Can I ask where people think the government get their money from? If it doesn't come through council tax, then it has to come from somewhere. It has to come through general revenue. Money has to be raised and it's unfortunate and it's unpleasant. But it is required that funds are raised to support public services. That is the nature of it. So if we don't raise it in council tax, it comes in general taxation. You cannot spend and not have an income. So let's look at what the government's done. We've already mentioned furlough. We've already, what about business grants? What about all the grants that have been given to business to try and keep them going? Business support, the £10.8 million that's come from Warwickshire County Council to support us through this, this pandemic. And let's not say the government's done nothing, because the government has, has moved heaven and earth to help local authorities and people through this. And I know there's political points to be scored at this moment in time, but let's, let's get a reality check on exactly where we are. And I'll notice a lot of smoke and mirrors going on today. The two key things that will drive recovery from my perspective in Warwickshire is the Recovery Investment Fund that has been brought forward by councillor Butlin and the, and the property fund, you know, to create a property company. If you pick up your cabinet papers, you'll see that it has the potential, just the investment fund, to save 4,000 jobs and to create 2,200 jobs. Now, can I ask you, when councillor Butlin pointed out at the beginning of this meeting the worries in the increase around unemployment, what do you think the key thing that is going through people's minds in Warwickshire at the moment? It's keeping their job. Because by keeping their job, they can pay their bills. By paying their bills, they can keep their lifestyle. That is what people need. They need the security of employment. And these proposals are all key to keeping that. And, you know, it's a budget that we didn't want to have to write. Nobody could have envisaged having, having to write this budget. But when we talk about spending reserves, can I just point out we have those reserves? Because we have resisted the constant calls at previous budgets to spend them. Because we've always pointed out they are for a rainy day. And as councillor Simpson-Vince pointed out, it's now raining and we need those reserves. So a lot of what the debate is today would have been absolutely academic if we'd have ceded to the request in the past to spend that money. It is for a crisis. We are in a crisis and we're sorting it out. Opposition budgets, I point you to the, the comments by the financial officers. Although there's sign-offs, there's sign-offs with very strong caveats around risk. There needs to be something held back, because are you absolutely certain there will not be another wave? Are you absolutely certain there will not be another variant? Are you absolutely certain that we will not need some money further on down the line to further support what's going on? So I've looked at our budget. It supports employment, it supports the economy, it jumpstarts the economy, gets it running again in Warwickshire, saves jobs whilst keeping that little bit of surety in case there's a problem further on. I think you've done an excellent job, councillor Butlin. I commend this. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Next to speak is councillor Colin Hayfield. Colin.
Thank you, Chairman. Obviously, I want to focus on the educational aspects of, of the budget. Chairman, this would have been a, a very challenging year for education, even without Covid. We know the huge pressures have been on our send budget, special educational needs children. And we're not alone in, 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 in feeling a lack of sufficient resources to be able to deal with that. But unlike councillor Atkins, we have to actually accept the fact, we have to deal with what we've got. We have to make the best use we can of the resources we have available to us. And our offices have been working incredibly hard on that, putting up new strategies and things, new relationships with parents and things. I have to say, the offices have also taken, I think, extensive steps to bring elected members along this journey with them. And the task and finish group that has been meeting has been well received, well attended, very thorough. And there's going to be some very useful recommendations, I think, coming to a future cabinet meeting as a consequence. And John Holland, yeah, it's John. I need to remind you again that the resources to schools, the dedicated schools grant is not within the gift of the county council. This is money passported from government to schools. And there are issues of sustainability for schools. We know there are. Some schools are struggling. With deficit positions or near deficit positions. And we've set up officer and head teacher teams to try and look at that and to advise and assist wherever possible. Similarly, we have an issue with our maintained nurseries that still. Do not have a secure financial future. But I have to say, we value them very much as a county council. And we are, it is very much part of our strategy, early year strategy, that we include our maintained nurseries in them. We have progressed ambitious plans to enlarge some of our schools and even build new ones. Using a combination of developer funding and government grant. The old Pairs site, our new Warwickshire academy for children with complex needs will be opening in Bedworth in September. We've got approval for a new alternative provision school to follow. And new secondary schools to follow. And in the last few days, Chairman, we've had notification from government. That the High Amlay North Academy, top farm if you like. Nine hundred secondary places has been given additional, a conditional approval by government. So we should be seeing that progressing. Our number of excluded pupils has continued to fall by over fifty percent. And 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 our number of needs, those not in educational or employment. And here the number, the lower the number, the better. We're at three point four percent against a national figure of five point five. Good progress there. We have a new career strategy and new skills and employment programme. And on top of that, Chairman, comes Covid. And the pressures that that has had and thousands and thousands of school days lost across Warwickshire. We knew already we had a problem with a gap in attainment. Gap of attainment between schools in different areas, gaps in attainment within schools. And the damage that Covid has put on that. And the inevitable widening of that gap has yet to be fully addressed. That said, Chairman, our Nuneaton strategy. Has shown promising initial results. And we hope for great things for that in the future. Remote learning became something that schools were having to. Come to grips with. And initially, it proved a bit patchy in its effectiveness. Too many children didn't have laptops or access to internet. But in the more recent lockdown, we've seen huge improvements in the quality of that remote learning. And on top of that, we have the initiatives that the county council has done. To bolster the government rollout of laptops. And dongles. I still don't understand what a dongle is, Chairman, but I'm reliably insured they're useful things. Perhaps someone might care to explain. But effectively, with about three thousand laptops, the county council have provided. To a point where we're starting to actually meet the needs identified by schools for their learners. And if in the future, future needs are identified, I'm sure the county council will step up to the plate again. Overall, schools have done a huge amount to make schools safe places for pupils. And you can imagine all the social distancing, other things that has to be done with children of different age ranges in schools to try. Because our schools haven't closed, Chairman. They've been open all the time for children from key workers and vulnerable needs. We've had issues with public examinations. And trying to reassure our children that their attainment. And hard work will be recognised in their public examination results. But if there's been a silver lining, Chairman, to the pandemic. It's been the way that Warwickshire schools have pulled together. Along with our education service throughout this this crisis. And I would commend Ian Budd, our chief education officer, for his dedication on this. He's been ensuring that school heads have weekly, sometimes daily briefings, bringing them up to date with. Latest information and things. There's been a whole series of meetings organised on a weekly basis with head teachers. And actually, the number of heads attending have been growing and growing. And never in recent years has the Warwickshire family of schools seemed so cohesive and effective as it is at the moment. And that, Chairman, is the backcloth to the education budget. Just two more minutes on where we actually are on that. Page forty five of the budget talks about the permanent allocations to education service, just over another six million added. And another one point five million to address pressures on school transport. Two hundred thousand to increase the education psychology service. Page fifty five details the three hundred and thirty seven thousand specialist provision in Nuneaton for the Pairs site. Page sixty five details the savings provisions. We all have to face the savings provisions. But I have to say, in this case, most of them are in-house efficiencies rather than any service cuts. And we're also building up the anticipated income from our various traded services. Page one hundred and thirty one, capital programme shows forty million pounds. Government and developer funding being identified towards new school place provision across the county. Terrific sum of money. But finally, Chair, repairing the educational damage done to our children's education. Well, we may have to make future budgets on the government's Covid funding, but most of that repair. Will have to be done by the sheer hard work and dedication of our school staff. In every educational establishment across Warwickshire in coming months. And, Mr Chairman, I have absolutely no doubt. That our teachers are up to that challenge. I commend this budget to the council.
Thank you very much, Colin. The next speaker is councillor Jeff Clark. Jeff.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Appreciate you calling me. And I do wish to also thank councillor Hayfield for identifying the new school provision. North Higham Lane, which is on the border of my own division in Nuneaton. I must say, the investment that the government are putting into these schools locally, I think, is absolutely fantastic. And I must live in a different Nuneaton to councillor Phillips as well, because. The government have just given Nuneaton and Bedworth Borough Council some thirteen and a half million pound for its high streets funding. So I'm a little bit perplexed, to be honest, as to where some of the opposition members are coming from today. There is significant money being put into the various schemes throughout the county. Turning to my own area, Mr Chairman. Councillor Buckland, the deputy leader, has just set out a great Conservative programme of measures. That will see our county through the recovery from Covid crisis and into a brighter future for the twenty twenties. Of course, as I've identified, families' health, education are paramount in our budgets. However, it is also a plan that recognises how central the areas of transport planning and highways are. To the county council's efforts as we continue our growth programme for Warwickshire. Our previous investments in transport infrastructure has been critical, sorry, crucial. In ensuring that we are moving forward, enabling the transport and businesses to grow both within Warwickshire. Recent schemes, Stunts Island, Northgate Street. Westgate Warwick was done, Coaten Arches in Nuneaton, which are both award winning schemes, the last two are both award winning schemes. Have only been possible because of the sound financial management and sustainability policies. That the deputy leader and the Conservative group have made this possible. Going forward, obviously, there are going to be challenges. We recognise that. The twenty twenties will not be an easy decade for our county or for our country. We face the economic challenge and so that our county can compete and attract investment. And thrive in tough economic climate situation in a highly competitive world. That is why we will be investing in major capital projects in the forthcoming year. And that will allow us to make necessary changes to our rail, road, infrastructure. And make sure that they're ready for the competition as it develops. We face, Mr Chairman, the challenges of preserving our environmental heritage. And helping the climate in which we all live become healthier, cleaner and greener. And the changes in people's travel needs as they change their behaviours to reflect this. That is why we will pursue sustainable transport projects. Including pushing for modal shift in our in our forms of transport. Enhancing and developing our cycling infrastructure. Not least with a four point two million investment in K two L and other cycle pass schemes that we have across the county. And will be coming forward in the very near future. We face the challenge also of protecting our children and residents, which to all of us is the most important duty of this council. That is why we will continue to bring forward a range of road safety schemes, as alluded to. Active travel, safer routes to school initiatives, twenty mile an hour schemes around schools. Alongside the upgrades to our cycle schemes and to protect our cyclists as is already identified. We face the challenge of costs of living also. And the financial pressures that fall on local residents as a result of this. Which is even more pressing in the harder times that have engendered by the pandemic. In light of this, I'm pleased to say, Mr Chairman, that. The Conservative group will not be raising parking fees on residents' parking permits. Or indeed increasing charges to our on-street parking spaces in this coming year. We're also committed to examine the introduction of business parking permits that has been requested. By local businesses for us to do. And to establish, to do this, we will establish a cross-party working group. To examine the issue and try to come forward with a resolution. We also face challenges of maintaining our existing road networks. Where the work of county highways is of critical importance to providing long-term durability of our infrastructure network. Currently, Warwickshire has some of the best maintained roads in the country. And we are the best, we are the top grant authority for customer satisfaction within our roads within Warwickshire. But we must build on this record. The Conservative government has continued to support us with substantial grant funding for road maintenance, the capital maintenance. Capital maintenance, excuse me, capital maintenance works around seven million pounds. From the pothole, for pothole funding that will be used for preventative patching and resurfacing of the roads. This will enable the county highways to deliver over twenty one million pounds of capital maintenance works. Which will include a hundred and ten resurfacing schemes, a hundred and twenty patching schemes, seventy footway schemes. To improve the long-term durability of our network in the forthcoming year. Not only all of this, Mr Chairman, we'll be investing in gully cleansing, which has been mentioned. Over the next two years, which will make our environment more attractive and bring efficiencies to our service. Which we have decided to reinvest these efficiencies into the service and so that we improve our drainage maintenance. And make us more resilient to surface water flooding, which has affected many areas. Better service, better value. That's the Conservative plan, Mr Chairman. And of course, we will continue to develop our winter maintenance and gritting services. Which are now benefiting from previous year's service, previous year's investments in the latest digital technology. Here again, we'll continue with our commitment. To the thematic mapping of our highways network to enable an even better service in the future. These are the challenges we're facing Warwickshire and county transport will be there to meet them. We do have a number of capital projects forward, Mr Chairman, as well. I'd like to talk about a great programme of capital investments we're pursuing at the present time. And we have secured a further twenty seven million pound from our own internal capital investment fund. High quality business cases have already been approved for schemes such as the Road Safety Engineering Project in Lawford Road Rugby. The four three nine Black Hill Junction, Temple Hill, Emscutt Road. And not least, and again, reiterating what I said earlier. Our commitment to historic, sorry, our commitment and historic investment in transforming Nuneaton. Which is a substantial project, again, money going into that area. Seems within the engineering design services and county highways will be delivered sixty nine million pounds of capital projects this year. Which include the following quite exciting schemes, forty six Stonely Junction, which I was involved in just before Christmas. The Newer Connectivity, the A three four hundred Birmingham Road. The A treble four College Street in Nuneaton, the A forty seven in Nuneaton. And the number of projects within the cycle programme, which again, all of these are expected to be delivered during twenty one twenty two programme. And oh, last but not least on that aspect, we do have a six point three million pound with help from the government. To help deliver our historic bridge maintenance programme, Mr Chairman. Again, a fantastic investment in Warwickshire's networks. But wait, Mr Chairman, there is more. Our teams are well advanced in working with D F T, planning two further exciting projects that will be successful in the next year. Firstly, we have been shortlisted and moved to phase two stage of the Rural Mobility Initiative. Where we are hoping for just over a million pounds from D F T. This plan will trial a new app based demand responsive service, almost concluded, Mr Chairman. Serving residents in rural settlements situated to the west of Warwick and the urban areas and parts of Kenilworth. In conclusion, oh, sorry, there is one more point. The all-electric bus town that the government again have given us money for. Warwickshire County Council will contribute one point three million pounds to deliver on-street charging for all districts and boroughs. In conclusion, Mr Chairman, taken together, these projects show Conservative groups' commitment. To keeping our economy competitive, improving our environment, keeping people safe. And helping with their cost of living and maintenance. In closing, Mr Chairman, I will be supporting the Conservative budget as it continues to deliver the excellent service our residents rightly expect. Of their county council. And I therefore also urge all members to support the budget that the Conservatives has put forward before them today. Helps bring a brighter future for the people of Warwickshire. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Appreciate your purveyors.
Thank you, Jeff. Next to speak is councillor Claire Goldby. Claire.
Thank you, Chair. Can you see me and hear me okay?
Yeah, we're fine, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So I'm just going to pick up on a few things that have been said. Over the course of this debate and a couple of other things that I'd like to to bring to the table. For the cuts in youth services that was mentioned before. We are putting almost a million pounds into targeted youth support. We do have family centres, we have a network of family centres, and to say that they've all been closed down is not correct. And I wish this this trope would stop, be wheeled out whenever it's sort of suitable. Let's not forget, people who are complaining about family centres and the reorganisation actually voted for it. In favour of the reorganisation in the budget that that reorganisation actually came out of. That seems to be something that is conveniently forgotten at every turn. We do have a different way of delivering services to families. We are more connected with communities now rather than being connected with bricks and mortars. We have increased the number of social workers, so much so that the average caseload now is down to seventeen per social worker. Giving them much more time to focus on each individual case or family that they are dealing with. So it's not all negative. It really isn't. And people within those. Services will actually tell you that themselves. Looking at the the Labour budget, there's a couple of items that I need to pick up on. The council tax support fund is a statutory obligation that's already carried out by the collectors of council tax. So that's the districts and boroughs. I don't believe there's been any conversation, certainly not with the borough that I'm involved with, to link up in any way with that from the county. But I don't, I don't, I don't know fully, but I don't believe that's the case. The Labour motion also, as written, says that they aim to make Warwickshire carbon free, not carbon neutral. There's a very big difference in that. If you're aiming for carbon free, as is written in in. If you're aiming for carbon free, as is written in the papers that I've got in front of me, you're going to need more than £4 million quid because you're going to literally have to go into everybody's home, change everything, all the gas boilers. You're going to have to ban cars from the road, it's going to take a bit much. You're probably actually going to need to clear all the residents out of Warwickshire. It's also quite telling that there's £4 million in this budget going into climate change and yet only £1.5 million into the Covid recovery for business. I would prioritise them very differently. I'm yet, as a councillor, I'm yet to be contacted by anybody who is more concerned by their carbon footprint than they are their ability to get and retain work. And I'm one of those people who are unemployed. I've been unemployed as part of Covid and I'm struggling to get a job. So yeah, I would rather the money go into helping people like me find a job, not helping me currently at the moment cut my carbon footprint because I don't think that is an everyday priority for everyday people. The government has been mentioned a lot as well. So just had a quick look on the government website and they've published figures that are available for all the world to see about who's had funding and what funding they've had. And for the sake of transparency, this government has given Warwickshire County Council £31,833,045 in Covid funding. So I also know that Nanteton and Bedworth Council have received an additional £2.5 million on top of whatever else they've received as anything from the county council. So it's not, again, it's not all about the nasty government. And, you know, I don't disagree that there are issues because I am not daft enough to sit here and say, everything's wonderful, everything's fine. Because from a personal perspective, I know that that's not the case. But I'm not going to say that everything is the fault of this council because it's not. Not everything is the fault of this government because it's not. At some point, people also have to take some responsibility for their own actions. And also, there are things that are literally beyond anybody's control. So all this browbeaten about it's the government, it's the council, it really isn't. Let's be reasonable, let's be reasonable about this. And talking about being reasonable, we've all, we always hear the same sort of negativity, that everything's awful, the world is, the sky is falling in, chicken licking stuff. And it always seems to come from the same quarters and it's not always based in fact. So I think we need to be honest with people about some of the things that have been said previously, as I aforementioned, the children's services. If you keep telling people that everything is bad and everything is horrible and the services aren't there, they won't contact us if they need those services, when in reality the services are there and people should contact us. And that is a message that I think we are all responsible for getting out there. Anybody that needs help should contact us. It's not a case of the services aren't there, I really do need to press that home. And again, this is not self-congratulatory. But we have come through some of the worst times in living in Emery, for me, for me particularly. And we are a lot better off than a lot of other places. And that's down to some really good examples of working from this council. We are in extraordinary times, this budget is predicated on the extraordinary times that we are in. It's not motherhood and apple pie, but it's also not the victimhood and quinoa that the Labour budget is. We need to just get away from that, be factual, focus on recovery. And then all the other things will be able to fall into place after that. So I am going to support this Conservative budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Now I'm going to move on to the next speaker who's to catch Dave Riley, Dave.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Unsurprisingly, Mr Chair, I'm speaking in support of this budget. And the point that I want to address members on is page 56, which is the HS2 allocation, which members will be aware, the Liberal Democrat budget is proposing be reduced. Now, I'd like to make a couple of points, please, Chair. And the first is that a proposal to reduce this budget is actually a failure to understand the nature of the budget. So all of the county council's HS2 services are recharged to HS2. And Warwickshire County Council has a forward funding agreement with HS2 to repay our expenditure. So to simply take out a budget line, which is an expenditure but also generates an income, is a nil sum gain. There is no saving to be delivered by taking out a HS2 expenditure from the budget. The second point I'd like to make, Chair, is that why would you want to do that in the first place? 25% of HS2 runs through Warwickshire. County council officers provide the first line of support to the communities in Warwickshire who are massively impacted upon by HS2. I'd very much like to see Liberal colleagues explain to Strathford District Council members about why we shouldn't be supporting the road safety interventions that HS2 were risking. I'd very much like to see Liberal Democrat colleagues explain to members of Burton Green and Water Orton, where there are massive disruption to those communities around design principles, why the county council shouldn't be at the forefront of challenging HS2. Mr Chairman, to take out that funding just shows a lack of care about communities in Warwickshire. We must make sure that we appropriately fund Warwickshire County Council to take on the might that is HS2 and protect our residents. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Well done, David.
Thank you, Dave. I think I've got no more speaks at the moment, but I've decided that we should break for lunch now.
During the lunch break with consultation with the group leaders, a note has been circulated to all members by Helen Barnsley, which sets out the revised Conservative substantive motion, and sets out the implications of that on the amendments proposed by the other groups. In the case of the Labour budget and the Green budget, this has resulted in consequential changes, which is set out in the summary that you have all been sent. Now, with the agreement of the meeting, I intend to proceed on that basis. So if everybody is happy to proceed on that basis, then we will proceed. I'm not hearing any objections to that.
Sorry Chair, could I bring up a point of order from the previous session please? When that's appropriate for you to let me do that.
Of course, yes.
Thank you.
Could you give us that again Chair? I missed it, sorry.
Chair, I haven't received it, so maybe putting it on shared screen would be helpful?
I believe it's too big a document to put on a shared screen.
Go through it again then, please.
Yeah, I will, I will. I think there's people still joining me. Helen, do you want to just talk about this point?
Yeah, it was when councillor Goldie was speaking about councillor Phillips's comments. So councillor Philip made a number of comments and then councillor Goldie commented words to the effect of that councillor Phillips needed to be more honest. Could you have an apology for that, please?
Did I mention anyone by name?
You were talking specifically about councillor Phillips's comments.
But did I mention anyone by name?
It was implied it was her, it was pretty obvious.
Did I mention anyone by name?
Chloe, you went through the list of things that I had mentioned.
I actually went through...
Can I just, excuse me, excuse me, order? This needs to be taken out of the meeting. I've been advised that you will need to take it outside the meeting, this point of order. So that's my ruling. So I will now, hopefully, read out what I did at the start of the meeting. I hope everybody's here now. During the lunch break, I think all group leaders were consulted and on that, a note has been circulated to all members by Helen Barnsley, which sets out the revised Conservative substantive motion, because there was a slight change. And it also sets out the implications of that on the amendments proposed by the other three groups. In the case of the Labour and Green budgets, this has resulted in consequential changes, not huge, but changes which are set out in a summary which has been sent to all of you. And so with the agreement of the meeting, I intend to proceed on that basis unless anybody objects to that. And I can't, I've got Cam Corr with a hand up. Cam, do you want to say something?
No Chair, it's a historical hand chair.
So unless, if everybody's happy with that slight adjustment to the substantive motion which has been reflected in all the other amendments, then I'll be happy to proceed. Gerry, we'll start the meeting. Gerry, you speak first. Gerry Rudhouse.
Thank you very much Mr Chairman. Fully understand now, yes, I've spoken to Andrew Felton of Finance, because the Liberal Democrat budget had £200,000 in it for domestic abuse and the rest of it, and that was in our revenue side, that doesn't need to be adjusted at all in relation to our budget. So very happy to continue into the afternoon.
Yeah, I think it's just the Labour and the greener budgets that have to be slightly amended. Right, so we're going to continue with the debate. Can I have some names of people who'd like to say something? If not, we'll be going to seconders. Ah, Cam, you've got your name up.
Sorry Chair, bear with while I turn the cameras on and all the rest of it.
Councillor Cam Corr, the floor is yours.
Thank you Chair. By God, who would have thought this time last year, when we set our budget, that we would be in lockdown one a few weeks later? We've not just had a rainy day, but as a nation gone through a tsunami of a year. The pandemic presented challenges no organisation had faced before, including how to respond to the national government legislation to say, "Stay at home"? Isn't that a well-known saying now? Closing many of our work settings overnight and potentially cutting off vital networks for colleagues who remained on the front line in our services, such as fire and social The delivery of the recent transformation programme enabled the council to provide an excellent response to dealing with the pandemic, led by a lean and high-performance leadership team. Our excellent response resulted from being much more adept at dealing with rapid change. We mobilised with mixed teams from across the council, made swift, risk-aware decisions and confidently deployed Covid funding to where it was needed. The structures and skills we have in place mean that we are agile to respond much more quickly with action. During 2020, a number of new service offers were launched to support members of the public as part of the organisation's response to Covid. These included the county-wide shielding hub operation, which provided over 10,000 food parcels to clinically extremely vulnerable Warwickshire residents; a free phone hotline which continues to operate seven days a week. In the initial response phase, the CSC took over 5,000 incoming calls for support with Covid-related issues and made over 6,000 calls to customers ensuring they had the support they needed; a distribution network which ensured PPE was provided to the essential service providers such as care homes; a mass testing programme enabling residents in Warwickshire to receive vital testing for Covid; a tracing service to trace sources of infection where residents help us to identify critical locations of infection; a service dedicated to supporting schools and headteachers in acknowledgement of the support and help our internal customers need in combating Covid. This council had previously prioritised making our workforce mobile and flexible in our transformation programme. In response to that challenge, the investment this council made to update our technology platform, moving to Microsoft 365 and creating what Microsoft informed us was the fastest rollout they'd supported. Service pros and Teams telephoning allowed all 4,500 of our employees to seamlessly transition to the new reality of working in the pandemic overnight. As a result, Microsoft have featured Warwickshire County Council externally as a good practice case study of Office 365 implementation, recognising the quality of our work. Broadband 5G rollout, our council plan is clear that this council will invest in and support the digital skills of our communities, businesses and young people. In support of this aim, our super vast broadband rollout continues to deliver connectivity to all communities, urban and rural, across Warwickshire, with over 98% of the county now connected. Our place shaping priorities for Warwickshire include access to fast, high-speed and reliable internet, vital considerations for our residents and businesses. The county will attract people to Warwickshire by continuing to invest in the rollout of both our fibre and 5G connectivity to all our communities. To accelerate this, we have developed local and national partnerships to establish a 5G project in Leamington Spa. This will allow us work with our gaming business sector to develop a radical improvement in internet connectivity. In recognition of this, this council has resolved to extend and improve gigabyte digital connectivity across Warwickshire and has adopted a digital infrastructure strategy to achieve this. The success of the changes we have made and the adoption of a proactive and responsive way of working has never been more evident than through the months of the pandemic. We have seen our social media reach significantly increased during the 12 months. And since February 2020, the team has created 10.45 million opportunities for users to see content shared on the council's main corporate Twitter account. We've increased our connectivity through Facebook, Twitter, Insta and likes. The team has launched a series of creative and innovative campaigns to ensure that we continue to extend our reach into our communities as far as possible using different channels. Including, we also shared original content on TikTok, Snapchat, Spotify and Facebook using groups across Warwickshire. Agreeing the principles to support an agile workforce has also been a key part of How We Work programme and we approved in December, enabling us to continue with our journey of creating a high-performing and agile workforce. We have also during this period seen our sickness levels reduce and as of the end of December, this was running at a 12-month rolling figure of 8.45 days compared to March 2020, outturn rolling figure of 10.90 days. Notwithstanding the pandemic, this is a significant reduction from last year's, brought about by enabling a more agile approach to work and working hours. Keeping a focus on performance based on feedback we've had from staff through the check-in surveys during the year, we are confident that the latest survey results will be positive and will continue to see high engagement scores. And we have also seen significant improvements in attendance levels. These are fantastic achievements, given the additional pressures that the global pandemic has placed on our workforce. And lastly, but knowing least, over the course of the pandemic, we have also initiated a new EDI programme. This has been a really important part of our work this year, which has been highlighted by the tragic events of the summer in the USA. We now have a focused programme of activity. I've been working with partners and perhaps most significantly in terms of affecting change, we have started and kept going the conversation, both internally and with our own staff and externally and through a range of different forums. We need to continue this work into 2021-22 and ensure that our focus remains on establishing a diverse workforce and an environment where diversity is valued and above all is the norm. It would be a remiss of me, Chair, if I didn't mention libraries, who have responded brilliantly to a very changing world. They have adapted their service offer to ensure that they continue to provide much-needed services to our communities. Some examples include making befriending calls, as I've mentioned earlier.
a finance, because the Liberal Democrat budget had £200,000 in it for domestic abuse and the rest of it, and that was in our revenue side. That doesn't need to be adjusted at all in relation to our budget. So very happy to continue into the afternoon.
Yeah, I think it's just the Labour and the greener budgets that have to be slightly amended. Right, so we're going to continue with the debate as though can I have some names of people who'd like to say something? If not, we'll be going to seconders.
Oh, no.
Ah, Cam, you've got your name up.
Sorry, Chair, bear with while I turn the cameras on and all the rest of it.
Council, Cam Call, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. By God, who would have thought this time last year when we set our budget that we would be in lockdown one a few weeks later? We've not just had a rainy day, but as a nation gone through a tsunami of a year. The pandemic presented challenges no organisation had faced before, including how to respond to the national government legislation to say, stay at home, isn't that a well-known saying now? Closing many of our work settings overnight and potentially cutting off vital networks for colleagues who remained on the front line in our services, such as fire and social care. The delivery of the recent transformation programme enabled the council to provide an excellent response to dealing with the pandemic, led by a lean and whole performance leadership team. Our excellent response resulted from being much more adept at dealing with rapid change. We mobilised with mixed teams from across the council, made swift, risk-aware decisions, and confidently deployed Covid funding to where it was needed. The structures and skills we have in place mean that we are agile to respond much more quickly with action. During 2020, a number of new service offers were launched to support members of the public as part of the organisation's response to Covid. These included the countywide shielding hub operation, which provided over 10,000 food parcels to clinically extremely vulnerable Warwickshire residents, a free phone hotline which continues to operate seven days a week. In the initial response phase, the CSE took over 5,000 incoming calls for support with Covid-related issues and made over 6,000 calls to customers ensuring they had the support they needed. A distribution network which ensured PPE was provided to the essential service providers such as care homes, a mass testing programme enabling residents in Warwickshire to receive vital testing for Covid, a tracing service to trace sources of infection where residents help us to identify critical locations of infection, a service dedicated to supporting schools and headteachers in acknowledgement of the support and help our internal customers need in combating Covid. This council had previously prioritised making our workforce mobile and flexible in our transformation programme. In response to that challenge, the investment this council made to update our technology platform, moving to Microsoft 365 and creating what Microsoft informed us was the fastest rollout they'd supported. Service pros and teams telephoning allowed all 4,500 of our employees to seamlessly transition to the new reality of working in the pandemic overnight. As a result, Microsoft have featured Warwickshire County Council externally as a good practice case study of Office 365 implementation, recognising the quality of our work. Broadband 5G rollout. Our council plan is clear that this council will invest in and support the digital skills of our communities, businesses and young people. In support of this aim, we see with our, in support of this aim, our super vast broadband rollout continues to deliver connectivity to all communities, urban and rural, across Warwickshire, with over 98% of the county now connected. Our place-shaping priorities for Warwickshire include access to fast, high-speed and reliable internet, vital considerations for our residents and businesses. The county will attract people to Warwickshire by continuing to invest in the rollout of both our fibre and 5G connectivity to all our communities. To accelerate this, we have developed local-national partnerships to establish a 5G project in Leamington Spa. This will allow us work with our gaming business sector to develop a radical improvement internet connectivity. In recognition of this, this council has resolved to extend and improve gigabyte digital connectivity across Warwickshire and has adopted a digital infrastructure strategy to achieve this. The success of the changes we have made and the adoption of a proactive and responsive way of working has never been more evident than through the months of the pandemic. We have seen our social media reach significantly increased during the 12 months. And since February 2020, the team has created 10.45 million opportunities for users to see content shared on the council's main corporate Twitter account. We've increased our connectivity through Facebook, Twitter, Insta and likes. The team has launched a series of creative and innovative campaigns to ensure that we continue to extend our reach into our communities as far as possible using different channels. Including, we also shared original contact on content on TikTok, Snapchat, Spotify and Facebook using groups across Warwickshire. Agreeing the principles to support an agile workforce has also been a key part of how we work programme and we approved in December, enabling us to continue with our journey of creating a high-performing and agile workforce. We have also during this period seen our sickness levels reduce as and as of the end of December, this was running at a 12-month rolling figure of 8.45 fig, four or five days, compared to March 2020, outturn rolling figure of 10.90 days. Notwithstanding the pandemic, this is a significant reduction from last year's, last year brought about by enabling a more agile approach to work and working hours. Keeping a focus on performance based on feedback we've had from staff through the check-in surveys during the year, we are confident that the latest survey results will be positive and will continue to see high engagement scores. And we have also seen significant improvements in attendance levels. These are fantastic achievements, given the additional pressures that the global pandemic has placed on our workforce. And lastly, but knowing least, over the course of the pandemic, we have also initiated a new EDI programme. This has been a really important part of our work this year, which has been highlighted by the tragic events of the summer in the USA. We now have a focused programme of activity. I've been working with partners and perhaps most significantly in terms of affecting change, we have started and kept going the conversation both internally and with our own staff and externally and through a range of different forums. We need to continue this work into 2021, 22 and ensure that our focus remains on establishing a diverse workforce and an environment where diversity is valued and above all is the norm. It would be a remiss of me, Chair, if I didn't mention libraries, who have responded brilliantly to a very changing world. They have adapted their service offer to ensure that they continue to provide much-needed services to our communities. Some examples include making befriending calls, as I've mentioned earlier. Many of our customers were shielding so to help overcome isolation and loneliness. The library service developed our befriending call service in March last year. Staff called regularly to chat, check-in and signpost to other services that might offer help, including to the shielding hub. Also, residents have been referred to the library service's ICT and learning officers so they could receive a telephone call to help them set up their tablets or laptops step by step as part of the Warwickshire Library's digital help offer to shielding customers. One resident told her doctor about the call she had received, telling them that the library service was there for her in the dark hours. They don't judge you, they just let you ravel on, she said. And the list is endless, Chair. Our registration service has been very busy with death registration, completed remotely with certificates and payments being processed in offices. At the end of lockdown one, we had 15,000 outstanding births over 42 days because we were not permitted to undertake virtual birth registrations. Our teams have worked very hard and the figure now stands at 108, which is a great achievement. Citizenship ceremonies are being completed virtually to keep on top of the demand. These are just a few examples of what has been achieved throughout this unprecedented year. I am so proud of our staff across the whole of the organisation and my sincere thanks to each and every one of them. It goes without saying that I will be supporting the Conservative budget. Why? Because this administration has demonstrated that it can deliver, protect the very residents who need our support. You won't be surprised that I will not be supporting the Liberal Democrat budget. Whilst it's good intentions, I find it astonishing the message I see from it. It runs to me by saying, run dry the reserves, increase the risk and at the end of the term, increase of borrowing by two million, more than what you started off with. Gerry, it's a good job you're not presenting that to Lord Sugar because you'd be fired. Nor will I be supporting Labour or the Greens' budget. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Cam. The next speaker is councillor Heather Timms. Heather. You're on mute, Heather. Mute.
It won't, it didn't want to unmute. I'm sorry about that, Chair.
Okay, you're not the first one.
Okay. Firstly, I want to speak about the voluntary sector and our Warwickshire Local Welfare Scheme. In Warwickshire, this long-term scheme helps at times of crisis and boy, this has been a crisis. We have and will continue to support families who need this help. For both next week's half term and the Easter break, those who are eligible for preschool meals will have support vouchers. During this pandemic, our community teams have worked across our voluntary sector organisations, signposting residents to where help was available in their community. ALK, Citizens Advice, Warwickshire Carver, Equip have all played a key role in supporting these volunteers who in Warwickshire have responded magnificently to help across the county. We support our voluntary sector organisation with nearly £1 million annually plus an additional 300k this year. The contracts are extended to March 2022 so that they have the security to continue to deliver. Thank you to all the organisations, the individuals and the staff for their work. Our budget will support you as we develop the work on delivering social value and a food strategy for Warwickshire. Our household waste recycling centres reopened with an innovative booking system, which has proved to be a great success. The staff met the challenge and have worked hard to deliver this essential service. There's been an increase in recycling during this period, which is great. Who knew a trip to the tip would be so exciting? Money is going in to ensure that as the new resources and waste strategy for England comes forward, we embrace and lead the shift in how we manage our waste and ensure the sites continue to meet the needs of residents. This budget, along with our council plan and our recovery plan, commits us to real action on climate change. We remain focused on and are progressing towards our ambition to be carbon neutral in 2030. We buy 100% green energy. We have reduced our energy demand through LED technology in our streetlights and we're promoting safe and active travel. We are already looking to produce more green energy and decarbonisation of our buildings, winning government bids to help. Last week, we launched our £1 million green shoots community grant scheme to ignite some of the many community and school projects that are out there in Warwickshire. Our residents will be able to deliver their own solutions locally. Next week, we will launch our Solar Together initiative to help homeowners easily buy solar panels to produce green energy for their homes. Money is also in our budget to support schools on their green journey after firstly identifying how they will want to be supported. On planting trees, we have a coordinating role to play across all the Warwickshire councils, who all have commitments to tree planting. We need to ensure that we correctly develop the biodiversity of Warwickshire and join up those green corridors. Our climate change capital fund of £4 million is there to ensure we deliver on the commitments made. Talking of green spaces, our country parks have stayed open throughout the pandemic and how much we have all appreciated our open spaces. I cannot praise the team highly enough as they have continually adapted, delivered substantial change from our investment in new parking systems and met the needs of as many users as possible whilst keeping everyone safe. We have exciting ideas on how the country parks can deliver more opportunities in a post-pandemic world, whether that is through outdoor education, helping to meet the climate change challenge, but most of all, continuing to deliver leisure opportunities for all. Again, the monies are allocated. Warwickshire has much to offer in a staycation world and our tourism and culture team have a major marketing campaign ready to go. And that will support the quick recovery of our hospitality and visitor economy. It's so badly damaged. Equally ready to go is our heritage and culture team, who have offered a virtual package to our residents and schools, which has been really well received. They are focusing on outdoor activities and our natural heritage and finalising a Warwickshire waterways strategy, which will tie in with some of the landmark events on the way. Both Coventry City of Culture and the Commonwealth Games have been allocated funds and these are huge opportunities to showcase Warwickshire and bring direct benefits to all of our residents, which we will take full advantage of. For the portfolio of environment, heritage and culture, our budget is the right budget and put some money behind our priorities of jobs, skills, health and a green county and to ensure that Warwickshire is full speed ahead on the recovery journey for all our residents. So invitation over to the bright side of life and support this budget. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Heather. Next to speak is councillor Andy Jenz. Andy.
Thank you, Chair. I welcome the Conservative budget and after listening to councillor Timms just now, I'm particularly pleased to welcome investment in our country parks. I think this can only be to the benefit in terms of health to all of our residents. Chair, having Kingsbury Water Park in my division, I can attest to the popularity and success of existing concessions within the park, such as a cafe. They not only generate income for the park, but are greatly welcomed by visitors. And I think it's important that these sort of concessions are provided in such a way as to not affect the natural beauty of our parks. But I think anybody who would come to Kingsbury Water Park and I'd encourage anybody who hasn't done so to come and have a look at Kingsbury Water Park. They'll see just how these concessions can be fitted into the water park without sort of affecting its beauty. Therefore, I think if we can develop concessions across our parks and sort of invest in our parks in other ways, it can only be to the good of visitors. It's good financially for the council, for the water park, for the parks generally, and it's good for visitors. For this reason, Chair, I'll be supporting the Conservative budget and I do commend it to the council.
You're mute, Chair.
You're mute, Chair. Okay, we all do it. Forget that. Okay, Andy Crump, you're next to speak. Andy.
Thank you. Hopefully, members will see the link between councillor Jenz's version of natural beauty and me coming on to speak with my presentation. So I think that was a seamless link there. So thank you for that, councillor Jenz. What can I say? It's a steady-as-we-go budget from councillor Crump's portfolio. Firstly, I would like to start off by paying tribute to the staff in my portfolio as well as other WCC staff who have gone well above and beyond the call of duty. Thanks too for the help from the finance team. But I would also like to say that we are fortunate in Warwickshire for having such a strong officer leadership team to guard us through these choppy waters that we've had over the last 12 months. And you'll see that there's probably a water-based theme in my speech all the way through. When I first took over as portfolio holder in 2019, the foreign rescue budget was still facing considerable budget reductions in future years, a legacy from previous administration, some of which potentially involved reviewing second pumps attestation on two. This was in spite of efforts by that administration to protect the Warwickshire foreign rescue budget. But fortunately, as the financial situation improved, as Warwickshire's economy grew and was the fastest growing in the country, we were able to remove those savings and invest further in the service. New equipment, in fact, the turntable ladder, has been a great success and I'm sure Nunneton and Bedworth Borough Council offices will attest to the great service that the foreign rescue used that equipment too. The service is also investing in vehicles and equipment, which will also lower its carbon footprint, e.g. electric vehicles and electric pumps, and there's 200k in the 2122 capital budget. Foreign Rescue has now received two inspections from HMICFRS, one COVID-rated, both of which were very positive and all this despite having me of its portfolio. So really great. But as with all these inspections, there will be learning points, but certainly the service emerged with great credit, especially with how it interacts with its communities. I'm sure everybody's seen Betty's 100th birthday celebrations, which foreign rescue helped with, along with Blue Light Services. And I just want to correct something from DG Evans, David Evans, who is the manager of MG Evans and Sons and Arthur Dunbar's union director. We would like to thank the whole of Warwickshire Foreign Rescue for their hard work on the 30th of December. As a family and the company are truly devastated, to say the least, at the damage caused by the fire, but with that hard work of all those involved, it could be really much worse. I'm delighted to say all aspects of our company are fully functioning. We would like to say we've been saved twice by Warwickshire Foreign Rescue. Once when they came to our rescue to fight the fire, which they did in a professional and efficient way. And again, now they have loaned us their removal vehicle. This will help us out massively at a critical time and will be invaluable in keeping MG Evans and Sons moving forward. So again, we're responding not only to the fire, but also responding to other issues. So this is what our budgets are about. And we continue to, Warwickshire Foreign Rescue, continue to develop its relationship with partners, the police ambulance, other fire services, Environment Agency and many, many other people as well. The safer Warwickshire offices, to call the Cozal, Austin, Polesworth and Gibson-on-Stair, are exact example of this joint working. Jointly funded with the police, we'll be giving a uniform presence in those areas to help with response time to the fire, please the medical issues. But I must stress the main mantra of Warwickshire Foreign Rescue is prevention, protection and response. And we're investing £300,000 in 2122 for fire protection. And despite fire protection, COVID, the fire protection team has adapted its methods of work and has contacted hundreds of firms and vulnerable people to ensure their fire protection is the best it can be. So again, we're trying to protect our businesses, for the economy and also our vulnerable people. There will also be significant foreign rescue capital expenditure around training locations in Stratford, Kingsbury and Leamaston, some of which are progressing faster than others. But once completed, there will be income opportunities from other services using the facilities and there will be even an income stream from water facilities. So and also from savings from the Hammond to Biden training from horses. Again, foreign rescue is going to be looking at its property and how it aligns with the council's property strategy. But basically, we will ensure that the safety of Warwickshire communities will be paramount when exploring future options for its buildings and estates. And we're also making sure we have the right staff in the right place at the right time to ensure that foreign rescue can respond in an agile and efficient way. Furthermore, the facilities will provide opportunities to outdoor education activities, water and road safety education for our younger people, which is, I think, is particularly important. We can work with councillor Timms's team and work on green and climate initiatives there and also have an enhanced location in parts of the county where these facilities are. The flooding leviation team will continue to protect Warwickshire from flooding, working with partners from the EA, Seven Tenth Water, et cetera. With capital schemes in Paleton, Fennycompton, Callicom and Bimuda, Bales, Brails, sorry, Welford and Avon, et cetera, totalling over £1.1 million in the pipeline for 2122, again to safeguard communities. And again, £200,000 will be spent on flood defences in 2122. Recently, councillor Timms and I signed off a bid to DEFRA for integrated catchment management across communities, landowners and agencies to increase flood resilience in Warwickshire. It will deliver a variety of nature-based solutions at each location and interventions will include woodland planting, hydroplanting in areas that would benefit, natural flood management in rural or urban settings and integrated surface water management that addresses sources of pollution, water-efficient farming periods of prolonged dry weather, habitat provision and carbon sequestration. But I don't know what that means, but I'm sure somebody will. Certainly some very positive environmental contributions to our community and we will also involve many local schools as part of the project. Trading standards, community safety have had a particularly busy year supporting our efforts to combat the pandemic. They have provided a great service to local businesses and helped them navigate the lockdowns and COVID-safe workplace. And they've been working closely with public health and with district and borough regulatory services as well as businesses to respond to workplace outbreaks and enforce the direct COVID regulations. So also developed cybercrime material to prevent our residents becoming victims of online fraud. And this is particularly important due to the increased vulnerability of some people with more reliance on online shopping. Certainly Warwickshire invests significantly in service to protect residents and visitors with a particular focus on the elderly and vulnerable. And for example, your trading standards, deals with animal health, agriculture, fair trading, food standards, et cetera. It's almost like the Monty Python sketch, what did the Romans do for us? Loads and loads. Again, significant amounts will be spent on emergency management and road and community safety with funding also coming from partners to make our communities as safe as possible. One of our council's key priorities is to encourage sustainable and active travel across Warwickshire. And the two new safe and active travel offices means even more work can be done to raise awareness of the benefits of active travel, road safety and improved air quality. The two posts have been funded by Department of Transport and councillor Clark and I will work in the A's on this and other A's because some of these areas straddle our portfolios. Finally, I'm most appreciative to councillor Butlerlin that the great work the community safety domestic abuse team has been doing over the last 12 months and longer, with the referrals up by 10%, has been recognised and the £100k for add-on for the next two years is being funded from reserves. Whilst the main perpetrators of domestic abuse are usually male, domestic abuse also happens in same-sex relationships and women can be perpetrators too. I would ask councillors to encourage their residents to raise any concerns as soon as possible better for fears to be unfounded than not to tell anyone and something tragic happens. The three numbers available in Warwickshire are 0800 408 1252 or the National Domestic Abuse Helpline, 0808 2024 7. And I'd like to thank councillor Goldby for mentioning the need for residents to get in touch with council and national helipads. This is particularly important. Mr. Chairman, I commend the Conservative budget to the council, a budget which seeks to protect. A budget which seeks to protect and safeguard Warwickshire residents, particularly the vulnerable ones, as well as providing stimulus to the economy to safeguard or generate as many jobs as possible during this difficult time. The Conservative budget continues to do the right thing for Warwickshire. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Andy. Next to speak is councillor Margaret Bell. Margaret.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to make a few comments in support of the Conservative budget. First of all, it's been mentioned that to emphasise, our prudent budget management has ensured we've got the reserves, both to help during the pandemic and to support this recovery, which this budget is so focused on. And we are also very good at attracting and using government funding that's available. And there's been some criticism of government support and funding to local authorities. But obviously, we all know the support that they've given during COVID, both to businesses, individuals and to councils. They've also recognised the mental health impact of the pandemic. And councillor Caborne's already mentioned a number of initiatives which we are bidding into to support and strengthen our mental health offer, which is very welcome. And I'd like to just say something that's happened in my division. We've just heard this week that the government is funding 50 schools to be rebuilt under a new initiative. And Hartsell School is going to be in the first phase of this, which of course we're very, it's very welcome. So all in all, I think this is a very optimistic budget and something that I really support. It's a budget that recognises and cares about the impact of the pandemic on our residents. And it's also, for example, in jobs and mental health. It's a budget for recovery, but it's also a budget with optimism and drive. And I'm very happy to support it, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. I have nobody else who is indicating that they wish to speak. If that's the case, I'll just leave it. Just remember, this is your last chance to speak, apart from the seconders and proposers. In that case, we will go over to the seconders of the amendments. We'll start off with the proposal of the Labour Group Amendment. Sorry, sorry, sorry. No, sorry. The second, we're going to do seconders. We'll start off with the seconder of the Labour Group Amendment, which is councillor Parsons. Councillor Parsons.
Thank you, Chair. I should be with you in just a second.
In your own time.
Yes, I was afraid so. Technical, technical injuries. That's it. Okay. There we go. I have to say that, first of all, thank you very much to the officers who've helped us prepare our budget. And to Virginia in particular, who put a lot of time in and gave us a great deal of help. We're very, very grateful to her in that. What I do want to do is to look at the fundamental problem with the budgets that we have today. Because the budgets today that we have today are essentially prisoners of the Conservative government policy over the last 10 years. I refer to the Local Government Association, which states that councils have faced a reduction of core funding since 2010 of nearly 16 billion pounds, a loss of 60p in every pound. And that's the Local Government Association. A recent survey suggested that 95% of local authorities have had to increase council tax this financial year and two-thirds have dipped into the reserves. I have heard it said at the last cabinet that it's only Labour councils that are facing this problem. And yet, when I look down the list, I find Northamptonshire County Council, which the government snatched out of bankruptcy and allowed to go unitary. I see that Somerset, another Conservative County Council, has problems. East Sussex County Council, Torbay Conservative Council had to suspend, put a auditorium on spending. Quite clearly, the problem in local government finances goes way beyond Labour councils and absolutely impacts on Conservative councils as well. So I've referred to this problem effectively, that we are the prisoners of the Conservative government's policy of the last 10 years. That policy, yes, we're facing COVID and have faced COVID. But this policy has been building up problems over that 10-year period. And I was particularly interested in councillor Warwick's point that the money has to be raised from somewhere to run local authorities. And of course it does, he's absolutely right. But he favours council tax to raise this policy, which is by every independent assessment, the most unfair of our direct taxes. The Institute of Fiscal Studies made the point that if we look at council tax, the poorest 10% of the population take up 8% of their income in council tax. The next 40% of the population receive, take up 4% to 5% of their income in council tax. The richest portion of the population, the richest 40%, take up 2% to 3% of their income in council tax. This is a grossly unfair tax. And it seems odd that when we talk about protecting our most vulnerable people, that we should go back to the most unfair of our taxes to actually claim to have done this. This is fundamentally unfair, fundamentally wrong, and it cannot continue. This is not the budget that we would have wanted to put forward. But it is the budget that we have to put forward in order to actually meet the commitments of the council. We accept that. However, the funding is wrong. If we look, the council tax that, according to our officers, over the last 10 years has risen by 32.7%. This is a time which has seen the lowest sustained period of wage growth since the Victorian era. Spending levels have remained roughly the same over this period. While inflation has continued to rise, the cost of service provision has risen ahead of the rate at which councils have been allowed to increase council tax without a referendum. And the government has reduced and finally removed the Revenue Support Grant with some very much reduced funding from the government through specific grants. At the same time, the government has dramatically increased the responsibilities of local government through the Care Act, placing a further enormous financial burden on councils with the responsibility for adult social care. Financial help has been promised, retention of business rights, the comprehensive spending review. But that is all they've been, empty promises, so much smoke and mirrors with nothing to show for it. But what we can do is increase the burden on the council taxpayers, the most unfair of our direct taxes. We were told that austerity is over by Theresa May. Riti Sunak has stated clearly that we cannot call what's coming austerity. But with a requirement for a further £50 million worth of savings, let's not beat about the bush, let's call it what they are, cuts over the next five years. Then the old adage comes to mind, if it looks like a duck, has feathers like a duck, flies and swims like a duck and furthermore quacks like a duck, then it is almost certainly a duck. Call it what you will, this is austerity. And local government can say that we are a low-tax party, we haven't raised income tax. Of course, don't mention the small print, which should read, we have switched the burden of tax onto local government, so it's not our fault. The fact that we backed them into a corner and given them no real choice, well, we won't mention that. The fact that you were paying more for less, year on year, well, we won't mention that. Or we'll blame it on local government inefficiency. A remorseless rate of increase imposed by the government measures over the last 10 years, the 32.7%, sorry, 32.7% increase in council tax, according to our officers, which has also seen more than 40% of cuts during that period. It's not good, but it does however get worse. The tax which is loaded by the government is widely found to be actually unfair. It's regressive. I've mentioned the burden of income, which falls heavily upon the poor and leaves the rich relatively untouched. But if we look at it, it does get worse. Council tax is based on the property values fixed in 1991, 30 years ago. Then Band-Aid properties, the top band, attracted three times the tax of a Band-Aid property, the lowest value property. Band-Aid properties are now worth on average at least eight times Band-Aid properties. And yet, no adjustment has been made. Essentially, the rich are being subsidised by the poor here. Property in Westminster, for example, worth millions attracts lower tax than properties in poorer areas because councils in predominantly rich areas have a rich income stream from their property holdings, which bring in fantastic amounts of wealth. Consequently, a property in Westminster worth millions will attract a lower tax band than a property probably in Warwick. It is.
Chair, is this relevant to the motions that we've got in place today? It's national policy.
Excuse me, I think councillor Parsons has every right to speak as he is, so I will allow that. Please continue.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. It is national policy which absolutely impacts on local politics because it's how we get our money, through the council tax, which is unfair. This is why I've said, this is not the budget we want to present. But we cannot abdicate our responsibilities, as this government does with the adult social care. We are at the sharp end of delivery and so we have to continue to deliver, even if the cost of delivery is terribly high for our poorest families. The cost of not delivering education for those in need of send provision would be higher. The cost of not delivering social care will be higher to those individuals affected. We are held prisoner by the government's policies and this is unacceptable and cannot continue. We have done the best in our Labour budget to actually mitigate the worst of these effects. We've done, we produced our eight funds which can put money into areas which are needed. We've put 2.5 million additional funding into council tax support, which can be administered through the district councils. This is to aid the poorest and most vulnerable families. And that, we believe, in this climate and in the increasing unemployment situation, is absolutely vital. Essentially, yes, we have to commend our council for having good reserves and having had the full sight to do that. That is true. And yet, we still sit in the council where we have a health gap. For example, you know, in the south of the county, 8%.
Councillor Parsons, you are over your time limit, but I will allow you to sum up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Fair enough. So there are many inequalities in our council, in our council, there are many inequalities in our council. I don't want to be entirely negative. Yes, there are some good things there and the like. But it's time we did get realistic. It's time we did look at the real facts and not just choose the ones we want. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dave. Next, I'd like to invite the seconder of the Liberal Democrat Amendment, councillor Bowe, to speak.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm just on a tot up. This is my 27th budget. And for anybody questioning my maths who wasn't around, I was elected in a by-election in 1994, which is why my years of budget are not divisible by four. And as many as others have said, this is the strangest, probably the first one I've worn jeans to. The first one I've sat in the Lib Dem group room for, rather than being in the council chamber. You'd be glad to know the drilling we've suffered over the years. I've got men, workmen banging outside the windows. It's making me feel quite at home. I'd like to reiterate the thanks to all our staff for the very, very hard work they've had to put in in some very strange circumstances over the last 11 months. I wanted to highlight particularly the work of our schools and our teachers and all those who work in schools. I get really cross every time I hear somebody say schools are closed. Schools are not closed. Schools have never been closed. Our staff there are working their socks off. And in this lockdown, they're having to deliver not only face-to-face teaching and remote learning, they're also delivering live lessons as well. So the workload on them is absolutely huge. And they're dealing with huge amounts of work and extra work to do. So I would like to praise them. I would also like to highlight the work of our fire and rescue service. I feel in some ways, I feel bad highlighting particular areas because I know everybody's working particularly hard. But fire and rescue comes under the area that I'm particularly interested in. And I do want to praise them because I know they've really set up to the mark and worked far beyond their normal remit. So thank you very much indeed to them. I just wanted to highlight some of the things that are in our budget. It's very easy, I think, to be negative about everything. And there are lots of negatives. It's much harder to be innovative and provide extra services when you're having to cut 45 million over the term of the financial plan. But I would like to say that we've worked really hard to find, over the length of the plan, 4 million extra to look after the mental health of children and families. I know many children and families have found this really, really hard. Particularly this third lockdown has been really, really difficult. Families, people are trying to work and home educate their children. And for many of them, they're living in, certainly in my area, I've got hundreds of families of people living in flats and tower blocks, they've got no gardens and life is really, really tough. And we've also highlighted the issue of domestic abuse. I wouldn't normally agree with Theresa May very often, but one thing she said in Parliament a few months ago was that lockdown is the worst thing that can happen to people who are facing domestic abuse. Because for many of those, going to work is actually their release, it's their safe space. Work is safe for them because they're out of their home. And now we're actually forcing people who are suffering domestic abuse to spend pretty much 24 hours a day with a person that is abusing them and their children probably too. And that is a terrible, terrible thing that we put people through. So I really welcome the fact that the Conservatives have agreed with us and with the other parties and actually put that cut back in. So lockdown has been incredibly bad for people's mental health. It really, really has. And we're also trying to, some of the other things that we're emphasising, money for cycling, rights of way and forestry, trying to make the outdoor environment better, trying to make the green environment better. Many of our families are actually, their only exercise they get is perhaps that daily walk, going out on their bikes. So to make that safer and more present and a better place to be has absolutely got to be the right thing. And as we see our lives changing, the way our town centres work changing, the way traffic works changing, it has to be right to encourage more people to cycle and to walk and to make them feel safer when they're doing those things. We also want to put in 150,000 towards helping schools, being eco-schools, something that used to happen in the past. Again, encouraging schools to help their children to enjoy the outdoors and to be eco-friendly. Really, really, really important. I also very much welcome 150,000 towards partnership working and supporting WALK, the Worker Association of Local Councils. I was really heartened by the number of people at the beginning who actually declared an interest because they were parish councillors or involved with WALK. I'm the vice-chair of WALK. And I know that parish and town councils have been absolutely at the forefront of the work in helping to rebuild communities and supporting communities. So we really, really welcome that money going forward. It is a difficult year and as already been said, I think we could spend hours, and some already have today, talking about the priorities of the government. Clearly, they've had to find money to expend to keep furlough and all the grants and stuff that they have done. But I think they do seem to have forgotten one of the best ways that they can. But I think they do seem to have forgotten one of the best ways that they can support residents and local people and the return of services is to support local government. Many people have formal contact with what comes from their local council than they do with what comes by their, by, by a national government. And having strong, resilient, well-funded, um, local government has got to be an absolute priority. It's already been said that only having a one-year settlement is really, really difficult. It makes it really, really difficult to plan. When I was first elected and going to my first budget twenty seven years ago, back in those days, each council, each group, their own independent standalone budget. We didn't do amendments to, to one substantive budget. Uh, and the big race then was always to see who could put the most into education and into schools. And in those days, and for many years, services were growing. We were putting lots of money in, finding innovative ways to increase services and make things better. Since two thousand and ten, it's completely turned on its head and all we do now is try and mitigate the cuts. Another forty seven, forty five, forty seven million pounds of cuts in this, in this budget. That's all we've been doing for the last ten years, is trying to manage cuts. It's no good. It's no good to go on. It's no way to plan. And without having that, um, ongoing, knowing whether the support is coming from government, it makes it even more difficult. So we need certainty. Uh, I'm sure, um, councillor Second, in her role leading the Conservative group on the LGA, I'm sure she is talking to government and trying to point them out the error of her way, of their ways. But I think, you know, all Conservative councils, because it's your government, with, by the LGA, have got to impress on government. A strong local government sector is good for us all because we're providing those services, um, very, very close to home and very, very close to the people. So I commend our budget. I think we have an innovative budget. We have a budget that is providing support where it's most needed for the, for the much, uh, mental health of our children and families, uh, because many of them, trying to rebuild, um, after, uh, this is all over, is going to be a very, very tough job. I will just finish by saying, um, that for, one of my major worries over this is the future of our young people. Many of them have seen, um, their education disrupted. We've got children coming into school who've seen, uh, services reduced, you know, you're, these infant aged children have seen big chunks of their school life completely gone. We've got, um, children facing GCSEs and A levels results in whatever form they come this year, where they've lost probably half that time in school. Very, very difficult to see them then going off to university and into further education, higher education, um, with their lives so, so disrupted. And that's why that four million pounds is so important because it will help to build the resilience in those families. So I commend the Liberal Democrat budget. This is the best budget that's on offer today. And if you support this budget today, this is the best future for Warwickshire and all our children and families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, the second of the Green Group has already spoken, so we'll go on to the second of the Conservative group proposals, which is councillor Izzy Second. Izzy.
Thank, thank you very much, um, Chairman. And may I, um, may I also add thanks to our staff, not just for today, for the budget proposals and all that they have done in supporting that, but also for everything they have done over the last year, which has been very different for them, very difficult for them, um, emotionally quite challenging. Um, and we've all learnt new ways of working and contacting each other. But I do thank them for all that they have done, not just for us as a council, us as members, but most importantly for our residents. Um, and I, I wanted to, um, also, uh, thank too, uh, the members who have spoken today for all their input in what is always one of the most important meetings of the council. And it's worth reflecting that pre-COVID, pre-this year, our economy was one of the strongest performing in the country. Uh, we've talked about this many a time before, but we have had a very strong economy. Our, um, our out, our economic output was amongst one of the fastest in growing in the country and also our growth in productivity. And we were, uh, and remained one of the strongest economic areas in the Midlands. So it was particularly difficult for our type of economy when COVID came along and we anticipated that we would face a bigger impact than many other areas. Um, and we know that, uh, the really strong performance that we had, which showed record levels of unemployment, very low unemployment. This has now changed and we are sa- seeing that increase and anticipating yet further. Um, however, I'm particularly proud to say that during all of this, uh, COVID impact, we have had a, a range of support from the government, public support. We have had, uh, investments into Warwickshire somewhere just short of forty million pounds in the various ways of supporting our residents. In, and not only that, but nationally, we have seen financial support directly to businesses and also the job furlough scheme, which is currently still going and has been a significant lifesaver for many people. Um, but the county council has been particularly proactive in responding to the crowd crisis and, and I commend our, our, um, officers again for this. Uh, the flexibility that they have shown and the fleet of foot that they have shown in supporting our businesses and working towards economic recovery. And we've also closely, uh, liaised with our districts and boroughs in supporting, uh, develop, deployment of grants to businesses, uh, who have been very close to closing. And this has helped them to survive a little longer and we continue to work to help our businesses in crisis. And you will see that in our budget today. We've had the cross-party member-led recovery workshops, which have helped to develop a very coherent and coordinated plan to support business and our economy again. And just to mention a few things around that, there's the C bills, the business interruption, uh, loan schemes. There's the grants to business to help them to adapt and diversify, which are out now and an advert to anyone right now if they need help and support. And then also we have the Survive, Sustain and Grow provision of specialist consultancy support to help businesses to develop their bespoke recovery plans. All in all, these programmes, we know, have directly supported nearly six hundred businesses in our county. And we anticipate they have helped to safeguard well over five hundred jobs. Five hundred jobs that might otherwise be facing a very different future right now. Um, and despite all these difficult times, there are also some positive signs that we can see. So last, um, the end of last year, we did see a very strong return to interest in our new business start-up programmes. And through this, we've helped seventy four new businesses to be established in the county. So we will be there to help those businesses who need it now and to help those start-ups in the future in the execution of a new business that will create new jobs in this world. Um, and we know too that we have had to be very fleet of foot in responding to the pressures that have come through this crisis. And the ability to turn fairly quickly is something I think I have never seen in local government before. And Sarah has talked very eloquently about the value of local government, which I completely concur with. Without local government responding the way it has done to help communities, to help residents and individuals and to help businesses, this year would have been a very, very different situation. And I do support everything she said about valuing the, the role that we play and the importance of local government, uh, alongside central government in the sport they've done. Um, we have had fantastic volunteering going on. Never seen the like of it before. It's been out there so quickly. And, and the support that we have been able to share with those volunteers has been very much appreciated and continues and goes on. And I think forms the basis of a new relationship with our communities and with our voluntary sector, which I can only think will be of value and of good to the future. Um, so, uh, I want to say that this budget that you see before you, which has been based over many months coming together, is the basis of a new future. And I truly, uh, listening to some of the inputs and, um, I do have to pick up on the points raised by the deputy leader of the Labour group. I, I, I mean, a real missed opportunity, I would suggest, to, uh, pick up on our budget. Um, maybe that was because there was nothing they could pick up on our budget. Because actually, it is a good budget because it delivers to our vulnerable people and it delivers to our businesses for the future. And it delivers a green recovery that we all hope and live for as well. I, I think too, making politically weak points just about national governments over many years now seems to have bypassed the fact that actually it was his last Labour government that actually caused the reasons for austerity in the first place. I, I refer you, of course, to the note left by Liam Byrne. Liam Byrne, who is currently running to be the Labour West Midlands Mayor, left a note saying, there's no money left, having been Chancellor. So what does that say for the future if he does get in? And really the world, according to Labour, the Labour Party that we have here today, according to the deputy leader, is not something I want to be part of. I want a council with hope, with ideas, with visions of a future and a budget that wraps round every one of those words. This is a budget that will deliver all of that. It will deliver for the future. It will deliver for our residents and make Warwickshire the place of choice for people to live, to work and to bring up their family as we have always wanted to and delivered in the past. And I would just say, we were very fortunate to go into this crisis in a financially sound position due to the diligence of this Conservative administration. This Conservative administration left this council in a good financial position. A position that all of you as different groups, as opposition groups, were able then to prepare your budget of wish lists. I don't want wish lists and pet projects. I want a future that is going to be bright for residents within Warwickshire. And that is what you have with a Conservative budget. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Izzy. We now move on to the movers of the amendments and I'm going to start off with the mover of the, mover of the Labour group amendment, councillor Helen Atkins. Helen.
What can I say? It's kind of all been said in, in a way, hasn't it, by the opposition parties? That how dire things are and I recognise the need to be positive about the future and I respect that. I respect the leader of the county to try and make the best out of a, what is it? Is a desperate situation or becoming more and more desperate every year. And, um, but we've got to be realistic. The reality is that we can't go on like this, as I said in my speech, can't go on raising council tax and making cuts because at some point you just won't be able to move forward. Um, I, I just don't think that the Conservative budget will successfully support the people of Warwickshire. I think there are gaping voids in it and that's perhaps why we didn't pick things out, as you're saying, Izzy, because, um, really it was a, it was a question of what can you keep going with what you've got? And I think the gaping holes are send funding, home to school transport, adult social care and health, climate change, supporting the BAME community, which is not a pet project by the way, and health inequalities. Um, and I also think if we look at the capacity of the council, where offices have done incredibly well under very, very, very difficult circumstances. But if we hadn't had austerity over the last ten years, and by the way austerity was caused by, caused by a global financial crisis, just like the pandemic is a pandemic, a national crisis. But if we had capacity in the system, if we hadn't had austerity, then maybe some of our offices wouldn't be absolutely stressed out and on their knees. And that goes the same for the NHS and other public services. So how are we going to move forward? How are we going to, um, increase our efforts to, to lobby central government? That's really what we need to be thinking about. And I, I think we've all been sold down the river by central government. And I think actually you, you as a, as Conservative councillors, have been sold down the river far more than anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Uh, next is the mover of the Liberal Democrat amendment, councillor Gerry Ruudhuis. Gerry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the way that you chaired the meeting today, um, which has been proved very difficult through this team's, uh, way of doing it. It does feel very different to a normal, um, council meeting when I can look across the chamber. Councillor Adrian Warwick can of course have a, a bit of a banter with him, but, um, I can't see you Adrian, so, um, um, because we have to keep cameras off. And com- coming back to, to, to the budget in front of us, lo- local government, which is something I'm passionate about, is actually, will always get done by national government. Doesn't matter what political party, coalitions, you will find that in local government, we always struggle. In fact, I was in a meeting recently and was told of the, I suppose, the days of when council tax could be, um, taken up by seventeen percent. And I certainly remember as councillor Sarah Bowden is, uh, being in meetings where we were talking about thirteen percent council tax increases, uh, which gave local councillors greater flexibility though to look around how they're going to fund and support local residents. One thing is for sure that I think everybody today has spoken about, is that COVID has changed everything. The landscape now is not the same that it was and it never will go back to how it was before the pandemic arrived. And certainly we will have to look at what we're going to do and how we're going to do that going forward, um, in, in different ways. And I would say to councillor Second that, you know, I, I did welcome the cross-party working groups in the run-up to look at the recovery uh, and those particular elements. And I think they did work well in a cross-party way. And perhaps we ought to investigate that more and do more around that actually, uh, going forward. Because I think everybody on this call today is passionate about their communities and their areas and the particular, uh, services that they want to see done. So our budget amendment, which is today, is not about relying on bids or actually putting, um, going off and running around. Actually, we've actually put money against our priorities. Because as I said at the beginning, I think we realise which particular budget we'll go through. And this is about sending a very clear message to the administration of Warwickshire County Council of what our priorities are and where our passions are for actually improving that. And you only have to look now at the average caseload, the full-time worker of social services and the thirty seven vacancies and forty five agency staff, the highest we have ever experienced in the last five years. And that's in children's services, just one area. And we all know that as the easing and the unlocking starts to come up, as NSPCC have said and many others, and the Children's Commissioner have said, you know, we will start to see massive increases in mental health, domestic abuse and all the other elements of the toxic trio coming out and, uh, at the same time. And I would ask members to do one thing, really, is to all look at paragraph eight. Somebody's got something switched on somewhere. Try again. So I'd ask members to, uh, all look at paragraph eight, which is based on the published summary of service estimates. This is the actual allocations that would go through to those services to deliver services on the ground. It's the budget because what we all forget is, what we've been talking about today, actually, all those services have budgets already. And when you go to paragraph eight, you will see what the allocation will be for next year if you adopt each other's. And if you adopt the Liberal Democrat one, you actually have Environment Services, Adult Social Care, Children's and Families coming out, beating all the other political parties at Warwickshire County Council. So for me, there's only one thing to do and that's wait for the Liberal Democrat budget, which we're presenting today. Because actually, if you want to put mental health support for young people and families first, it's our policy and our budget that's doing that. And I ask you to support it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Gerry. Uh, now we move on to the mover of the Green Group amendment, Jonathan Chilvers, councillor Jonathan Chilvers, sorry. Jonathan.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, first of all, thank you for, um, the Conservative group for taking on board the, and taking action on the, uh, domestic, uh, abuse funding. Um, yeah, uh, appreciate you doing the right thing on that one. Um, I do just want to, I'm going to just briefly respond to some of the points raised. Um, but firstly to say, I don't think it's wrong or, um, unhopeful to point out the reality of where we are, that we still have faced massive cuts to services over the last ten years and now we are facing another five years of, um, of funding cuts, uh, in all of our budgets. And so, yeah. And so, yes, it's important to be problem solving and coming up ideas. But I don't think, I think we also should be looking the reality in the face. And that means naming where there are going to be real cuts. And so that brings me on to education and Colin. And for instance, you said that some of the biggest cuts, Colin, would come from efficiency within the education programme. But if you look at some of those savings, those cuts in the later years, 1.1 million, 1.8 million, that effectively means taking support away from schools, which we often talk about as a really good thing. So that's a cut, that's not an efficiency, and we need to recognise that. And as councillor Atkins pointed out, you know, some of the holes in our budget in send and homeschool transport are huge and troubling. And the amount of extra money we're going to put in is, you know, for homeschool transport, we're getting another extra 20 million by five years' time. And we've got a, I'm hoping that our combined brains within the council can come up with some constructive work on that. Because, you know, these are huge numbers that we're talking about. Moving on to transport, yeah, Geoff talks, councillor Clark talks about modes of transport. And yet, we are still investing 36 million pounds in the Stony Junction. We are still pursuing the frankly absurd A46 link road, which will cost tens of millions of pounds. You know, we need actions, not words. So there's been some good things in terms of cycling. But we are still pursuing building bigger roads rather than investing in alternative modes of transport. Please hear about 20 miles an hour around schools. And I wonder if councillor Clark might be able to extend that thought to neighbourhood zones. So people where they live can feel safe for 20 miles an hour and the council investing some money looking at that. Yes, thank you. Heather, for your comments on climate change and on, I think, trees. I think we do have a coordinating role. But, you know, we really want to highlight that we need to put investment in there. We should be further down the line on trying to implement those commitments than we are at the moment. So I look forward to working with you on that. And likewise, councillor Crump, pleased to hear about some work on natural flood management. And again, I hope that some of the work on that will result in cases for investment from our own funds in natural flood management. So I look forward, if you've got information on that, to making it available to us as members. I wanted briefly to comment on saying, there is, there's no dichotomy, there's no conflict between moving towards a clean, green economy and job creation. Actually, in Warwickshire, we're in an excellent position to be able to create jobs, get people into work whilst also investing in a future that protects, protects us all in Warwickshire for future generations. And so I think we alls have to look for that win-win about job creation, wellbeing. Because people, you know, keeping people in work is crucial. But we need to do it in a way that is safe and clean and environmentally friendly for not just this year, not just next year, but for decades to come. So I commend the Green proposals to you around those consistencies of investment in our people's services, like youth strategy, young people and addictions, and also picking up the pace, really picking up the pace on climate change and transport transformation. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Jonathan. We now move to the mover of the Conservative group proposals, councillor Peter Butler. Peter.
Thank you, Chair. Over the last 12 months, as we kind of got used to the team and Zoom experience, I've become familiar with people's pets, their children, their back bedroom, their lounges. I've seen it all over the last 12 months. And also, it's an indication to me how well people have stepped up to the mark in terms of being able to kind of conduct these meetings, adapt their own houses and still deliver the services. It's been nice actually seeing some of the pets that people put on their laps as we have the meetings. And it's kind of light in the moment. As we all basically kind of struggle with the fact that we cannot go out to see their children, my grandchildren, and we cannot kind of book our holidays for next year. These are things that we're all having to deal with, as are the rest of the public. And we have to take that into account when we kind of deliver our services for the next coming 12 months and five years, as playdate in the MTFS. And yes, Jonathan, it's not just one year, we're doing the MTFS as well. The one thing we've also proved is local government can deliver. Time and time again, the local government has been kind of like the go-to organisation to get things done, to sort things out, to make sure things are actually delivered on the ground. And Warwickshire has basically kind of been at the front of the delivering of those services and making sure the members of the public are safe. It was the virus. It wasn't any political party that the fault of this crisis. It was the virus that came from China. And it's caused immense damage to our economy and the wellbeing of the people in Warwickshire and also the nation. And we're going to have to live with it for some considerable time. But this budget that I put forward is to encourage and accelerate a recovery from the damage that's been done. There was no manual, there was never a manual for something like this. And it was inevitable that politicians from all parties, from all likes, were going to make mistakes as to what they considered to be priorities. We put in place, as part of our budget, the Property Development Company. And councillor Conocore basically implored upon me, slow down, redo it and start again. I'm afraid those who are facing the loss of jobs, the lack of ability to get affordable housing, would not thank us one iota for delay. We have to get on with this now and deliver those jobs, those opportunities and that stimulus to the economy of Warwickshire, which is what the Property Development Company is about. We've also got RIF, which is also investing in ourselves. All the money that we're kind of like in the next paper on the Treasury Management Strategy, this is about investing in Warwickshire. And also, that would deliver some substantial number of jobs and save a lot of jobs. I've kind of looked with interest at Labour and the Greens' budgets. But there was one kind of fundamental flaw in all of them is that they kind of made the same mistake that they wanted to mistake on previous budgets. And that's flagrant and raids upon the reserves. We've kind of taken what we consider to be manageable to deliver the recovery that we want, but still have some reserves there for the aftershocks. And I use the word aftershocks because we do not know what's coming around the corner. Resources, as we've increased all areas of this budget, have seen an increase in money, all of them, apart from one. And that's my own department, where we've actually seen a small decrease in their budget. So I've led by example on this one. Youth unemployment, unemployment is a fundamental part of what's going on here. We've kind of, I put this into numbers. I said in my speech, and I said we've gone from less than 2% up to 9% to 10%, where it possibly could end up. Now, if you put that into numbers, in real people, real people's losses of jobs, losses of businesses, we're looking at something from going from a low of 7,000 in Warwickshire up to 26, somewhere between 26 and 30,000 people losing their jobs. That is every household losing an income. That is every household having a certain degree of despair and having to kind of readjust their hopes, wants for the future. And this is what we're going to take into account when we set this budget. It's about getting them back into work as fast as possible. Our budget is about recovery. I have no apologies for that. And prior to this, there was a survey in terms of amongst the general public nationally as to what their priorities were. Top of the list was health. Second on the list was the economy and their jobs, second. And then it goes down, kind of, you know, health, wealth. And then it was kind of things like education and looking after our children and et cetera. Way down the list was the environment. It's something that we can afford when we've got a strong economy. But we've got to set priorities. And the priority is to get the economy booming again. And then we can start looking to the environmental issues. Mental health is a fundamental problem. I mean, I struggle at times when I kind of sit there staring at the same four walls all day, knowing I'm not being able to go out and see my children and what have you. And it's the same with everybody else out there. So this budget is designed to kind of address those things. And I think on every aspect of our budget, we've addressed all those issues. But most of all, I hope this budget gives hope to the general public of Warwickshire. Because hope is what we need. But I did not see that hope in the Labour budget or the Liberal budget. So I commend this budget for the council and hope I get your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Peter. We now come to the part of the meeting where we're going to vote. We're all going to vote on the proposals and the amendments separately. Before each vote, the chief executive, Monica Fogarty, is going to explain to the brief members or let them know what changes have been made today so that all members are very clear about what they're going to be voting on. So we're going to start off with the Labour Group amendment and over to you, Monica.
So in terms of the Labour proposals, the implication of the friendly amendment, the implications are that the 0.1 million saving has already been removed. The time limited allocation is additional spending. The impact is to increase the use of reserves in 2122 from 11.779 million to 11.879 million. And over the period of the medium term financial strategy, this increases the use of reserves from 40.6 million to 40.8 million.
Are there any questions on that? Because if not, we will move to the vote and I'll ask the chief executive to take the vote.
Okay. When I call out your name, please answer and please. Yeah. Okay. So can we have hands for the motion, the amendment? Please leave your hands up. Sorry, which amendment, Chair?
We're voting on the Labour Group amendment. So all those who want to support the Labour Group amendment, please put your hands up.
Is it the whole budget amendment or just the small amendment that's gone on?
Because there's lots of Conservative hands gone up and I don't believe that's right.
So we are voting on the amendment only. Through the chair, please, through the chair.
We're voting on the Labour Group amendment, I made that quite clear. So all those who want to vote in favour of the Labour Group amendment, please show.
This is the Labour Group amendment to the Conservative proposal, which now incorporates the friendly amendment. I'm seeing eight hands. Could I ask for votes against? Please raise your hands for votes against. That's 39. Any abstentions? Please throw your hands, put your hand up if you are abstaining, which does sound a little odd. But if you are abstaining, please raise your hand. Councillor Morgan, your hand is still up, is that correct?
Apologies.
Councillor O'Rourke, your hand is up, is that correct?
Monica, I don't think my hand showed, Mike Ryan.
Okay, Mike. Was that in the against?
It was, yes.
Thank you.
Monica, that's for me as well, it's not showing. It's Cam, sorry.
That's okay, it's fine because we have 40 against, eight for and one abstention. So that amendment is defeated.
Thank you, Monica. We now come to the vote on the Liberal Democrat Group amendment. And Monica will explain if there's any been any changes to it today and then we will vote on it.
Mr. Chair, just a quick interjection. So Monica's aware Dominic Skinner's had a family issue, he's had to rush out.
Okay, thank you. So incorporating the friendly amendment from the Conservatives, the implication for the Lib Dem amendment is that the 0.1 million saving has already been removed and 0.2 million additional spending has been added into the budget on a permanent basis. Therefore, there are no changes proposed to the original Liberal Democrat amendment.
Thank you, Monica. Monica will now take the vote on the Liberal Democrat Group amendment.
So please raise your hands if you are supporting the Liberal Democrat amendment. That's eight. Please take down your hands. And if I could ask those members voting against the Liberal Democrat amendment, put up your hands now.
He won't take my hand down.
That's 37 and I've got you, Chris Williams, as well on screen. And so if I can have any abstentions finally.
And Parry's hand is stuck up permanently.
Councillor Parry, your hand is still up, is that, thank you. Four amendments, four abstentions, excuse me.
It can only get better.
It can. So that's eight for, 38 against and four abstentions. So the Lib Dem amendment is defeated.
We now come to the Green Group amendment and Monica will explain any changes that have been made today.
In terms of the implications of the Conservative friendly amendment, the implications for the Green Party amendments are that the 0.1 million saving has already been removed. The time limited allocation is additional spending. The impact is to increase the use of reserves in 202122 from 8.092 million to 8.192 million. And over the period of the medium term financial strategy, this increases the use of reserves from 29.8 million to 30 million.
Thank you. We will now vote on the Green Group amendment and I'll ask Monica to take the vote.
Please raise your hands if you are voting in favour of the Green Group amendment. Thank you. If I could ask those voting against the Green amendment to raise your hands now. Please throw your hands and those who are abstaining, please raise your hands now. Councillors Cable and Tims, your hands are still up. Councillor Parsons, your hand is up, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, sorry.
Thank you. In which case, that makes that two votes for, 38 against and five abstentions. So the Green amendment is also defeated.
Thank you. We now come to the Conservative group proposals. If these proposals are accepted, then we will go to substantive motion and that will be recorded.
So we are now voting on?
No. Okay, so this one will be recorded. But first of all, so this Conservative group proposals now, because all the amendments have been refused, becomes a substantive motion. So that will be a recorded vote. And before that takes place, Monica will just explain any changes that have been done today.
Thank you, Chair. So this is in fact going back to the friendly amendment, which was proposed earlier. So the implication on the Conservative proposal is that the 0.1 million saving is removed and the time limited allocation in additional spending. The impact is to increase the use of reserves in 202122 from 6.635 million to 6.735 million. Over the period of the medium term financial strategy, this reduces the savings to be delivered by 0.1 million to 48.211 million and to increase the use of reserves from 32.4 million to 32.9 million. Can we move to the recorded vote?
We now move to the recorded vote and I'll ask Monica, the chief executive, to read the names out.
Thank you. Atkins.
Against.
Barker. Bell. Birdie. Bode.
Against.
Brain. Butlerlin. Cabor. Cargill. Shilvers.
Against.
Clark. Coburn. Cook. Crump. Darmash. C Davies.
Against.
N Davies.
Against.
Dervix.
Against.
Falk. Sorry, Falk.
Against.
Thank you. Fragley.
Against.
Gifford.
Against.
Gilbert. Gisane. Councillor Gisane. Goldby. Grant. Councillor Grant. Hayfield. Holland. Horner. Jen's. Corr. Conde Corr.
Against.
Morgan. O'Rourke.
Against.
Panda. Parry. Parsons. Phillips. Redford. Riley. Councillor Riley. Rickards. Roberts. Rolf.
Against.
Roothouse. Sargent. Secum. Shilton. Simpson Vince. Skinner, absent. Okay, Tims. Warwick. Webb. C Williams. Thank you, Chris. P Williams. Thank you. So I can confirm that the substantive motion is carried with 32 for, 18 against and no abstentions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. That's the budget and financial strategy agreed. We now move on to item three, which is the Treasury Management Strategy and Investment Strategy. And I'd like to ask councillor Peter Butlerlin to move the report. Peter.
Thank you, Chair. I have no intention of delivering a very long speech on this one. But other than to point you to a certain section, if you look at the recommendations, this is pretty standard stuff. But the main difference between what you might propose on an annual basis is the way in which we can change things going forward. And if I refer you to 1.3, the recent treasury management activity has been the council's holding significant cash balances in relatively safe settings and not needing to take out new borrowing. No treasury investment has to be on a small scale. The key features for activity for 2021 and 2021 are significant levels of new investment in the Warwickshire Property Development Company, significant increases in the level of borrowing to fund the WPDC and mainstream capital programme, and challenges in the efficient management of cash balances in an environment of sustained low interest rates and a higher risk of cash flow pressures. As anybody knows, that low interests are a kind of a phenomenon we're having to live with and it's affected our income levels in the council, which was also mentioned in the budget in my speech. We have to move money about to avoid negative interest rates, where we're actually kind of paying to put our money with people. So we have to be fleet of foot and have an investment strategy to reflect that. Also, we're kind of looking towards, as has already been voted through on the WPDC and we're voting and cabinet on the riff at the end of the week, a investment in ourselves and kind of the stimulation of the economy for people in Warwickshire and new businesses. So this is the significant difference. If you look to the appendix on this report, also you will see all the kind of the prime movers on terms of the world economy, economic forecasts, Brexit, you name it. There is kind of a bit of dialogue there, which kind of influences our strategies going forward over the next 12 months. And on that basis, I would like to kind of take it as read and move for approval.
Thank you, councillor Butlerlin. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that, Chairman, and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you, councillor Secum. We now have opened the debate and first of all is councillor Keith Kandaka. Keith.
Thank you very much, Chair. This is actually almost more interesting than the budget, because this is what happens to our money over the next five to 30 years. And fundamentally, I'm very concerned. Because if you look at page 144, which is page eight of the report, it's got a pretty illustration of the various ways we're investing our money. And the property development company is very high risk, or it's called high risk, and gives us a 6% rate of return. Absolutely nowhere in this paperwork does it tell us what the assumed rate of house price inflation is or house price construction inflation is. So it's a massive report and so much is dependent upon making money from property. Property we're mostly going to build in the early years in an Eaton and Bedworth or more particularly in my ward or division. And so it's incredible that there is not modelling that is publicly made available as to what the house prices are going to do. And clearly, Covid hasn't lasted three months like councillor Butlerlin assumed it was going to last. And with the South African variant being allowed into the country with very little cheque and the hotel quarantine fiasco continuing, it is very likely we are going to have a period of low growth, collapsing house prices potentially. And without any of this report telling us what house price assumptions it's based on, this is a meaningless projection. We know we're going to have to have about seven million pounds reserves in case the property company makes a loss. But the details of this are rather vague and rather frightening. So I'm really keen that we do the property company, but I'm keen we do it carefully. And I think this report needs to be based on realistic assumptions of house prices, which it should outline, and realistic assumptions of other stuff like population growth. We know this pandemic has caused a very large number of overseas nationals from leaving the country. I get about 30,000 in Coventry and Warwickshire. We know Stratford is really suffering, particularly because of its mix of employment. And so so many unknowns are going to hit the property development company. I do not think a single point with our sensitivity analysis is right for this report. I say I'm most concerned about the property company taking on too much risk and just assuming that we can sell houses with year on, year on, year rising house prices. This council has always been very prudent. In the past, it has had one of the least borrowings. It has been the most careful council in the country, as far as I know, on how it borrows. That is changing radically and changing just at the wrong time, when actually a lot of the things for housing market could go catastrophically wrong. I hope they won't, but we could be going into the 1920s scenario or we could be going into 1930s scenario. So I'll be voting against this and I ask that my vote is recorded. And if other members are keen, that we do a recorded vote. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Keith. The next speaker is councillor John Horner. John.
Thank you, Chairman. That was a surprise. This is perhaps appropriate, actually, to follow councillor Conde Corr, because the property portfolio of 6% is not unreasonable. If you look at the way property runs long term, it's an average return, remember, councillor Conde Corr. Also, this is actually affordable housing, most of which is underwritten by government. So it's really a question, as you get a 6% return on what is pretty well a government risk security. And as a consequence, it's a reasonable investment. Thanks, Chair. I'll be supporting the Treasury strategy.
Thank you very much. Do I have any more speakers? Can't see any. In that case, we'll go to the seconder councillor, is he second, to respond?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll leave it as is. And I think we've had a long enough day. But I do support this Treasury Management Strategy and we'll move to the mover, please. Thank you.
Okay. Right, we go straight to the mover then. Councillor Peter Butlerlin, Peter. For you to sum up.
Thank you. I'll just point out that although it's implied that our borrowing and borrowings will be in high category, in actual fact, it is recognised that our borrowings up to date have been very low compared with our turnover. And especially compared with most of the local authorities. In terms of where this will take us in terms of our borrowings, it puts us in firmly based in the middle of the field in terms of our borrowings. So it does not kind of create a situation where we look like an excessively borrowing authority. And as councillor Horner has just pointed out, the risks are well managed and well pointed out in papers we've kind of brought forward when we did the presentations on the WPDF. So I'm more than happy to kind of put this forward for vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Peter. We have had councillor Kandaka asking for a recorded vote. We need three councillors to ask the one. Will anybody else support his application?
Yep, happy to do that, Chair. Just councillor Shilvers.
Okay, we need one more councillor to make it a recorded vote. I can't see anybody who's. Okay, right. Well, in that case, we'll go to recorded vote and I'll ask the chief executive, Monica Fogarty, to take it.
Thank you. Atkins. Barker. Bell. Birdie. Bode. Brain. Butlerlin. Cabor. Cargill. Shilvers. Clark. Coburn. Cook. Crump. Darmash. C Davies. N Davies. Dervix.
Against.
Fragley. Gifford. Gilbert. Gisane. Councillor Gisane. Goldby. Grant. Councillor Grant. Hayfield. Holland. Horner. Jen's. Corr. Conde Corr. Morgan. O'Rourke.
Against.
Panda. Parry. Parsons. Phillips.
Against.
Redford. Riley. Rickards. Roberts. Rolf. Roothouse. Sargent. Secum. Shilton. Simpson Vince. Skinner. Thank you. Tims. Warwick. Webb. C Williams. P Williams. So that is 44, 10 against, so that is carried.
Thank you very much. Item four, I know other items verge in business. So before I close the meeting, I'd just like to thank councillors for their patience. I will say you're quite a civilised bunch of councillors and you've made my job a lot easier today. So thank you very much and I declare the meeting closed. Thank you.